I called the special meeting for the Board of Education on October the 20th, 2020, to order. Wichita Public Schools will be a district of choice in our region where all students and staff are empowered to dream, believe, and achieve. My name is Cheryl Logan and I'm the Board President. Tonight's special meeting of the Wichita Board of Education was originally scheduled for October the 26th. We have rescheduled this meeting for tonight in order for the Board to discuss and/or take appropriate action regarding the gating criteria and the learning model for the second quarter of the 2020-21 school year. This allows our buildings a few additional days to adjust to whatever the Board's decision is tonight. Would you please join me in a moment of silence? Thank you. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. I miss having our JRTC students here to lead us in that. Mike, this COVID-19 statement, please.
Yes. My name is Mike Willamy, Clerk of the Board. This special public meeting of the Wichita Public Schools is taking place at the North High Lecture Hall, 1437 Rochester in Wichita. Due to the Governor's Declaration of Emergency and due to health and safety concerns that exist because of COVID-19, no members of the public are present at this meeting. This meeting is available to be viewed live by the public in the following ways: WPTV on Cox Cable Channel 20, the district's website at www.usd259.org, WPTV Online, and livestream apps for phone, Roku, and Apple TV by searching "WPS-TV." Following the conclusion of today's meeting, this meeting will be available on the WPS YouTube channel. It will also be rebroadcast on WPS Cox Cable Channel 20. The agenda for this meeting was published on October 19th, 2020 at www.usd259.org/boe under the BoE Meetings: Agendas and Minutes tab. The news media also received the main agenda and a portfolio containing the appendices. At this meeting, all Board members, district staff, and presenters will identify themselves by name and position before they speak to assist the public in following the meeting. The usual public communications item that allows members of the public to speak at Board meetings has been removed from the agenda. In its place, an email public comment item has been added. Information about how patrons can submit email public comment is included on Page 1 or 2 of the BoE agenda. Public communications will not be placed back in the agenda until the public again starts attending meetings. There will be an executive session at the end of this meeting. The following procedure will be used concerning the executive session. A motion will be presented by a Board member that states the subject matter and justification under the Kansas Open Meetings Act for going into executive session. The motion will state the time the Board will return from executive session. The live broadcast of the meeting will not end until the Board returns from executive session and adjourns the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you very much. First item.
Under Reports, Service Employees International.
Hey, welcome.
Hello, everyone. President Logan, Superintendent Thompson, Board members, thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak. My name is Esau Freeman and I am the Business Representative for Service Employees International Union Local 513. And for those of you who don't know, we represent the paraprofessionals and custodians and pretty much everybody in the school who is not an administrator or a teacher. So when I say the employees I represent are feeling this way, that's who I'm talking about. First, after looking at a lot of these charts, I'm really excited about the fact that we aren't having a lot of infections at school amongst each other. So something that we're doing is right. And, you know, thank you for everything that's been done, for the PPE and all those great things, because that's making it possible for people to do the job they need to do, support our kids. The only concerns that I've gotten calls about lately, and I've been trying to help people to understand, is when it comes to contact tracing, people are awful worried about, well, how are they going to know that I was next to that person if they don't ask me? And kind of where the intersection between that and HIPAA violations for divulging other people's medical information. So we've been trying to do a good job of explaining to people, you know, you wouldn't want anybody to know why you were gone, and so we have to respect that for one another. So we kind of talked a little bit more about the contact tracing is specifically for trying to find out who's there and where it might go from there. It's not necessarily, you know, protecting anybody aside from the masks and the protections that were taken. And so I think with a greater understanding, people are feeling a little bit more safe about what's happening and what should be going on. The other thing I wanted to talk briefly about was sporting events. Our security officers do great work for USD 259. And, you know, it's really awesome that the kids are able to go ahead and participate in sporting activities. But I would please ask the parents and the fans to help out and make sure that you wear your masks. And let's not have any situations where security officers are put in the uncomfortable position of having to ask you to put a mask on. We're all there to enjoy the kids playing the sports, and we all want to stay safe and not have arguments or concerns. And that's been a concern from our security officers, that, you know, we're all here for the good purpose of watching the kids play the games and see them win. We don't want to have any ill feelings or any confrontations during those times. And beyond that, there's a little bit of concern for personal safety, just everybody being scared. But, you know, I think information is the one thing that is helpful, and you guys have done a good job of putting this stuff out here. And we know you're making another tough decision this evening. So we have faith that you are doing the thing that you think is best and that you are going to do what is best for the employees as well as the students and our community as a whole. So, thank you and good luck with the tough decisions this evening.
Thank you very much. We appreciate all your help to get information out to people. Thanks.
I have a question for the board.
Is there any particular group of your employees that are feeling more stressed than others?
I just think, overall, there's been a lot of people working since the very beginning of the pandemic back in March, and they, you know, they've come into work every day that they've been asked to. And, you know, I think people are just kind of wearing thin. Not so much the paras, I think they're really excited to be here, and most of them I've talked to said things are great, we've got our masks. You know, we've got some people that have their own personal health concerns, but overall there's just, you know, even in the administration here, teachers, everybody, people have been planning and running since March. And I think sometimes people are kind of hitting a wall and need to think about self-care and, you know, just making sure that the people who are taking care of the people are being taken care of.
Will you please tell them we say, "Thank you, thank you, thank you. We are very grateful," and we don't ever get a chance, or I don't get very often a chance, to say it in person. But if I could see them in person, I would say that. Sort of like we say to soldiers, "Thank you for your service."
Absolutely.
This is kind of like a war against the virus.
Absolutely. Thank you. We appreciate that, Ernestine. And I, you know, I think they'd be happy if any of you guys popped into your neighborhood school whenever you had time and thanked them personally and saw what was going on, because they, you know, they're out there every day caring for the community and keeping things moving. So we appreciate your support for them. Thanks, guys.
Next item.
Report, United Teachers of Wichita.
Good evening, President Logan, Vice President Hedrick, Dr. Thompson, and BoE members. I'm Kimberly Howard and I'm President of United Teachers of Wichita. As you can imagine, the decision you are going to make this evening about the learning model for the second nine weeks is the subject of much discussion by teachers. As we have stated so many times before, we believe the BoE must use the gating criteria as it makes its decision about the learning model for students. However, common sense and science indicate a near certainty that the next two or three months will see a significant increase in COVID cases. Given that near certainty, given the experiences of our elementary teachers and support staff thus far with the mixed learning model, and given the unanswered questions about the proposed plans for middle and high school, we are very concerned about the district's readiness to bring middle and high school students back in whatever configuration. We recommend the BoE use the next two months to establish a quality plan for the second semester should the gating criteria at that time support it. We, of course, firmly believe students need to be in school. We are teachers and we are very concerned about the educational, social, and emotional needs of our students. However, student health and safety is paramount, and safety is already being compromised in many elementary schools. As COVID quarantines and illnesses rise, the substitute teacher crisis worsens. Every day, students for whom there is no substitute are being farmed out to other teachers and mixing with those cohorts. Every day, teachers are losing planned time to cover for absent colleagues. The substitute crisis is overburdening teachers who are already overworked and completely at wits' end. And this situation will only worsen with the return of middle and high school students at this time. Tonight, you will undoubtedly be presented with various data and statistics regarding our current situation. The data regarding the COVID positivity rate has risen significantly since last Thursday's COVID Task Force meeting, from 6.07% to 9.4%. No matter what decision you arrive at tonight, we ask that you pledge to call an emergency BoE meeting the moment the county 14-day positivity average moves up a category, which could be soon, since we are currently 0.5% away from the orange. We wish we could recommend one of the proposed plans that might be brought to you tonight, but we have not been actively participating in developing these plans, and what has been shared lacks specificity. The elementary plan has not gone smoothly despite the district's refrain that all is going well. It has taken weeks to address scheduling issues and class sizes, and MSR teachers and specials teachers still need much relief. I'm sorry, but UTW does not have the confidence that the district will have an effective and safe plan for middle school and high school students and staff in the buildings by November 9th. This morning, I was listening to an interview by the Director for the National Institutes of Health, and one thing that really stuck with me was this: People are tired of this virus, and yet the virus is not tired of us. Thank you.
Julie, you have a question?
Oh, yes. I put my name on here from the very start because I want to say to you also the same thing that Ernestine said to Esau, is we want you to let the teachers know how much we appreciate them. And I've heard some messages from some teachers this week that, you know, that they are feeling stressed and at their wits' ends, and we want them, or at least I want them, as a Board member, and I'm sure all of my fellow Board members agree, that we want them to know how much we appreciate. We know this is an extremely difficult time, and we know everyone's having to go an extra mile, and we just really appreciate their work and their commitment to our students. So please tell them thank you on our behalf.
And they hear that. They know that. They hear that from you guys, but they're so beyond stressed that they have moved past that. They now need action. That's where they're at.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Kim. Next item.
Email public comment. We had five patrons submit emails to the Board of Education, and those were provided to the Board members this morning and will be attached to the BoE minutes for this meeting.
And we have received those. Thank you very much. Next item.
Consent.
Ben, do you have anything to pull from the consent agenda?
I have nothing to pull from the consent agenda.
Ernestine?
I have nothing.
Julie?
Nothing to pull.
Stan?
No consent items to pull.
Ron?
Ron Rosales, District 6, nothing.
And I have nothing to pull. Do I have a motion to accept the consent?
I move we accept the consent agenda.
I second Ron Rosales, District 6.
Okay, we have a motion by Ernestine Crable and a seconded by Ron Rosales to accept the consent agenda. It's a little slow tonight. Give one more second here. Yeah, now it's going. Motion passes 6-0. Mike Rody is unable to attend the meeting tonight. That's the reason it's a 6-0. Next item.
Under Finance Budget Report, Administration will update the Board on the 2020-21 budget. This item provides an opportunity for the Board's information and discussion.
Welcome, Susan. It's always a pleasure when we get to see you. Thank you.
We might reserve that.
I can take it back, huh?
Good evening, President Logan, Superintendent Thompson, Vice President Hedrick, members of the Board. My name is Susan Willis. I'm the district's Chief Financial Officer, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight. I know there's a lot of weighty items on this particular agenda, but I thought the information that I needed to present to the Board was important in light of the fact that the Superintendent's Operational Report for the 2020-2021 school year was submitted Thursday late in the day. That particular report is somewhat of a snapshot of the 921 count data, and it has a number of financial implications for the district that we wanted to go through with the Board members tonight. As always, I like to start out with financial good news. So we wanted to talk a little bit tonight. Certainly, we are in better shape than many of our large urban district counterparts across the country. Our state has not significantly done any sort of cutting to school funding, at least for this fiscal year. That is a tremendous benefit for school districts across Kansas as we navigate through COVID response and all the other needs that we are addressing for this school year. We have not had those challenges the way many districts across the country have had to deal with the pandemic response and budget cuts at the same time. So that has been truly a gift for us. Some of our other funding sources are in pretty good shape. Our capital outlay is solid, maybe not enough to catch up some of the deferred maintenance needs, particularly in light of some of our COVID response actions, but we're still very solid in capital outlay. As we've reported before, our bond and interest is in very good shape, certainly enough to pay for the district's debt, and we are aligned to pay those payments over the next nine to 10 years. So I feel very confident that bond and interest is in extremely good shape for our district. And another piece of good news is our health reserves have held. That's always a concern, considering how important the benefit package is to district employees, and the fact that we have not had to change the plan design or really take any action related to the health plan, at least for the next calendar year, 2021, is very valuable to our staff and to the overall health of the district. So that's very, very good news, at least at this point. And certainly, the fact that we received federal cares, packages to help with technology, cleaning supplies, PPE, we would be in an entirely different situation if not for those federal aid packages in addition to the money coming to us from Sedgwick County. And we're going to go through a little bit of that in detail tonight so the Board can see exactly where those dollars have gone. But that was a game changer related to our pandemic response, and it can only be viewed as a bit of financial good news that we had those dollars. But that doesn't negate that we do have our financial challenges. So we had already shared with the Board earlier that being in a declining enrollment trend has not been good for the district overall, as far as we have to continue to review these budget items and adjust accordingly as that funding is, even though there's new base aid, as far as that base aid percentage has gone up, the funding decline basically takes some of that back. So it's kind of been this ongoing trend on a slow roll. We'll show you the chart. But that is a continuing issue for us from a budgetary perspective. The fact that now that the court case has settled, we are in kind of a very even future for base aid increases if the state doesn't have to come in and cut, and those base aid increases are set at 3%. They were higher in the previous years, a little bit more. Last year, it was six and a half; the year before that, it was four. So we are definitely in a less new state aid position compared to our previous years. We are under continued legislative scrutiny. We finished the ESOL audit earlier this year. We are due for cash balances audit coming up next. This followed the at-risk audit that the state had come in and reviewed our at-risk expenditures. So we continue to be subjected to these additional set of eyes, looking at how we're spending dollars and making sure that we are accountable, which, of course, we welcome if you know the whole story. So why do we spend the way we do? Let's talk about the why in addition to where the dollars go. So that's just an ongoing challenge for us to meet those kind of constant questions and scrutiny related to our spending patterns. The impact of politics, certainly, and local, state, and federal economic conditions always have an impact on school budgets. It's a trickle-down, particularly at the state, how the state of Kansas is, so will follow education at some point. I think the Governor's done a very good job of making sure that those cuts to this point and any sort of adjustments have been kept away from education. But she herself has said in some of her COVID updates, if there isn't a federal package, education could be on the table for next fiscal year. So we are very cognizant of that, and some of our long-term planning includes that warning, if you will, that short of additional funds available for education, that there could be some future adjustments. Special education in particular continues to be a very big challenge for our district and districts across Kansas. By statute, we should be receiving 92% of excess costs. We are receiving this year about 69% of excess costs. That's down from between 72% and 73% last year. So this trend of receiving basically a percentage of less and less for our most needy populations, it will continue to be a challenge. We'll have to figure out how to make sure that those needs are still covered and yet still cover all the other needs of the district. So that continues to be a problem. But what we're talking about primarily tonight is the impact of the pandemic, and particularly the pandemic on enrollment. So first, we wanted to kind of show you the count timeline compared to a normal year. This chart shows had the school year began on August 12th, we would have had five full weeks between the start of school and the count date to intake students, to make sure their transportation was aligned, to get them in the right seats. It's just a process at the start of school to get everything settled, and we really use all five of those weeks every year to make sure that we maximize counts. This year, we had one full week and about four days. That's unusually tight timeline for a count. But unfortunately, there was no exception coming our way, that is in state statute, that particular date. So we basically had to make do with what we could, and we got it done. So this is tonight, what I want to share is the impact of that particular timeline on our finances. So here were the enrollment trends up through 2020, and I've shared this chart before, but it is now updated for the official head count on 9/21. You can see we were trending down, but we have now taken a fairly significant dip going into 2021. That's a decrease of 2,621 students, primarily in the elementary ranks. Pre-K alone was down over 20%. Kindergarten was down almost 10. So you can see the elementary particularly was the bulk of that, but certainly, we had declines in all areas. Secondary held fairly close, but we're still down just a little bit. That does mean that at least from a count perspective, we've had a decrease of 4,100 students over six years or an 8% overall decline, 5% for this year alone. So as we've talked about before, the base aid on the per pupil allocation is static because the formula actually does a look back. The state of Kansas wanted to be able to estimate their obligation to schools a little bit better, so they changed the formula. Instead of a current-year enrollment base, they'll look at the higher of either last year or the year before, and we're using two years ago. So that number was not impacted. Where we get impacted more so than our suburban counterparts is in our waitings. The waitings are based on current-year counts. So what our pre-K counts are, what our ESOL counts are, CTE, our free lunch counts, that impacts us this year. It impacts every school district this year, but we depend a lot on those waitings to serve, again, our neediest populations. So when those counts don't come in as anticipated and are impacted by the overall enrollment decline, we have a budgetary impact. And so what this chart is basically showing you is where we built the fiscal year 21 budget, and where we budgeted FTE to land, and where we submitted data on the SO-66. So KSD should have this out online. I don't know when. We just submitted it Thursday, so it'll take them a little bit to put it all together. But this will be public information. You can see the decline from the budgetary items by category. The bottom line to the general fund before special ed and virtual, and we'll share why those two are specifically excluded, is about $6.8 million reduction in the general fund. We anticipate at least a $2 million audit adjustment. And that's when KSD will come in and pull records related to all of these counts. If we can't substantiate those counts, or if there's a record discrepancy, or if we fail to exit a student that's actually been exited, or whatever, because, again, we only had a week and four days, and then we've been cleaning up data ever since, we might have adjustments. We typically do, this is just, it's normal, KSD anticipates that every school district has it. Last year, our adjustment was $3.5 million, so I'm estimating hopefully low, because KSD has told us they were going to work with school districts and give them a little bit of grace, given our situation. So I'm going to hold them to that, which is why we're estimating at $2 million instead of the higher number. But we still then anticipated about an $8.8 million budgetary impact to the general fund. Now, the LOB will also be impacted, because remember, it is a percentage of the general fund, so we believe the LOB will also, well, we know the LOB at this point, based on the counts, will also go down $2.2 million. So total legal max between those two funds, the budgetary adjustment will be $11 million So the Board may have a question about, okay, well, what about the LOB? Where did those dollars go, and what can we do here? For the most part, now the LOB increase, instead of the $13 million we had planned, it's now 11 and a half. That particular increase covered our transportation on the regular ed side. It covered some of the special ed transportation increase shortfall. We had to, again, because those percentages for sped continue to decline, we've had to We had to, again, because those percentages for sped continue to decline, we've had to transfer more to cover sped expenditures, services, teacher salaries, paris salaries, all of those expenditures that go into special ed. We have to provide more support from the other funds because we don't get enough state aid. And then our, the property casualty insurance and that whole laundry list of fixed cost increases, net of other reductions, and we just kind of put it all into one pot of $2 million net. So, right now, we're looking at any remaining LOB budget flexibility of about $400,000. So, there are additional budgetary risks to that legal max still coming. The first is related to special ed funding. So, I excluded special ed specifically because we don't actually get a final special ed allocation from the state until May. They actually measure our staffing levels two or three times a year, and they do this for everyone in the state. So, they can kind of, they pull this data so they're able to then in May give a final, here's what, you know, there's only a certain pot of money for special ed. And you get your share of it based on how many teachers you employ, how many pairs you employ. So, they're measuring all through the course of the year. And so, in May, we get that final, here is the number. So, it could go up, it could go down. We won't actually know the final number until May. So, there's some room for improvement if this, overall, the state is down and so maybe we'll get a bigger piece of the pie because the overall state is down. But if we're just part of, you know, obviously, the 283 districts across Kansas and others are going up, we're going to get a proportionately lower share. So, it just depends. So, it's, right now, it's just a budgetary unknown. We have to kind of plan for if it goes up, we might do this. If it goes down, here's what we have to do. It's just a risk factor for us right now, just an unknown. Virtual funding is a little bit of a challenge only because we're really in this first year of kind of an enhanced programming model. Virtual is funded different than the waitings and the base aid FTE we showed you previously because it's based on a flat amount. So, a 1.0 virtual student is funded at $5,000. And if our students audit at 1.0, we're in good shape from the virtual standpoint. If they're 1/10th short because of whatever minutes they get audited, a .9 virtual student is $1,700. So, there's just a big discrepancy between a .9 student and a 1.0 student for funding purposes. We think we're solid, but we've not had an audit on this program. So, again, it's another risk to us. That particular fund had pretty good cash carry forward from last year. So, even if we are adjusted in virtual, I think we'll still be good, but that's just an unknown at this point, especially with a first-year program. We're going to want to watch that audit carefully to make sure that we've kind of crossed the Ts, dotted the Is, and we've counted the students accurately. Again, the audit adjustments could run higher than $2 million. Like I said, last year, it was three and a half. So, again, we're hoping for that grace. We're hoping that everything we heard as far as capturing my school remotes for count purposes and the forms that might be needed and all of those things that KSD and the district kind of went back and forth on there for about two months, we believe we're solid. But until we get those final audited numbers, it's just an unknown factor at this point. And then the additional COVID response that needs have yet to be identified. Typically, I'm getting, I need requests a couple times a day. In fact, I believe Mr. Newman just hit me up for some overtime hours just before I came down here. So, this is a daily response mechanism at this point for COVID-type expenditures. We are in a, I wish we could be proactive and get out ahead of this and know exactly what's going to come, but the circumstances, as you all know, continue to evolve and change. And we're just in a mode where, okay, what do we need? What do we need? How do we do it? What do we, how do we plan for, you know, what we do next? So, it's a budget risk because we just don't know what might be coming around the corner. It's only October of the budget year. We have a lot of budget year left to go. CARES. The CARES money, we've talked a bit about, so we're going to kind of give you just an update on where we are on CARES. That initial CARES federal allocation was $17.9 million. We shared that there was a non-public portion. They changed the rules to say the nonpub portion could be a larger portion than we initially anticipated. Then they've changed those rules back to be related to their Title I populations. We're still not final on that number. So, right now, we're still holding back based on the $2.7 million. I think we're going to come in closer to a million and a half to two, but those are not final yet. So, again, another piece of unknown related to our budget that we are still trying to finalize. So, those funds, those federal CARES funds available for spend, we believe are about $15.2 million. We did actually get a little bit more money from Sedgwick County. That was a bit of good news. We originally had received $1.3 million, almost 1.4, and they allocated another $800,000 to us. So, that's good. That will help us with, again, more technology issues and some of the internet pieces that we've been challenged with. District has also been awarded some specific funding for internet access. This was funding managed from the Spark Task Force, but we don't have that final award amount and we have not received any instructions yet. So, I believe it will be approximately $1,005,000, but I don't know that definitively, so I did not include it in this chart tonight. I like to have the actual signed letter in my hand before we start going public with firm numbers. So, that's an estimate at this point. Where have those dollars gone? Primarily secondary technology devices. That's actually an encumbered cost as those devices are now hopefully en route. The other technology and equipment, including internet costs, are running almost $5.7 million to date. Our protective equipment, again, to date is $1,008,000. As circumstances change, as we need additional and refill type of supply needs, we will have, those expenditures will continue to kind of increase over time. Cleaning supplies, worried about, not quite $1,007,000. We threw in the continuous learning packets from the spring at a quarter million dollars. Elementary and some secondary supplies. I mean, if you think about it, we needed things like more computer screens and headsets because we're doing this remote teaching. So, just things that, kind of the peripheral equipment beyond just the normal technology spend. Additional licenses, so Lexia, for example, and we needed those additional licenses since more of those students are using these remote and online services so that we don't lose ground. And then printing signage, all of those normal things. So, you know, that puts us at about an $800,000 loss, but if we throw in the 1.5 we think we're getting from the Spark, right now, we might be $700,000 to the good. Again, before we start seeing some of those refill needs and other related issues as we go through the rest of the fiscal year. We might be with, if we get that Spark money, well, I'll call it the Spark money just because it's simple, we might be $700,000 to the good for this list because that's specific to internet and I've got some of those internet costs into this list. So, I think that's where we're going to end up, at least for this point in time. This is a point-in-time data poll. It will change. Expenses continue. They will, we are continuing to track. I think, we've shared this list before, there are other COVID-related items that are not in the actual CARES allocation because we're trying to figure out how to do those elsewhere because CARES, as you can see, is for the most part used up. That includes the leave costs associated with those first two weeks that an employee could be out because of COVID, some of our HVAC needs. There's a tremendous number of hours being spent sanitizing and cleaning filters and those type of expenditures. Again, the loss of nutrition services revenues. I think nutrition services is going to be okay right now. We'll just have to see, again, depending on how things proceed. Medicaid revenue from the spring, the loss of the wellness point revenue, which again was the right decision to make, but that does have an impact to the health plan. Additional supplies beyond what we've captured in the COVID tracking for CARES. Subs, you heard mentioned the continued challenge with subs. That's a pretty low number probably for what we'll end up spending with subs, but again, the issue there is there's not enough of them. And that has an impact in many areas, not just classroom coverage. But again, we can count those subs for sped capture, and if we're not filling them, we can't capture it. So, again, there's just a tremendous impact across the system when we don't have enough subs in classrooms, not the least of which is the impact on students and staff. The additional lunch coverage, we haven't even begun to put a number to that because, again, a lot of it will depend on the board's decision on the next, you know, what happens in the next quarter and the next semester. We might have to provide, again, additional lunch coverage for additional social distancing. So, that's kind of an ongoing issue that we have to accumulate. And then all the other unknowns, again, like I've said previously, that we just don't know about. And then, you know, the question has come up primarily because the Kansas Policy Institute put an article online related to our cash reserves. So, I wanted to cover that with the board as well because we're getting a lot of inquiries into our office, and I imagine you might be receiving similar inquiries. So, what I did is I basically took our July 1st unencumbered cash report that's included as part of our budget document, submitted to KSD, and I was able to successfully recreate or back into KPI's number. They include some things, they don't include other things in their number. But what I wanted to show the board tonight was of their $133 million number, and it's, that's accurate. There's $133 million in cash. In fact, there's more than that. There's closer to $211 million in cash reserves throughout the district funds. But if, when you delve deeper, which is always the challenge, is there's always more to the story. When you look at the monies that are in our cash reserves, in the $133 million that KPI quotes, the highlighted items in orange are restricted funds of some nature in that they are, they exist for a restricted purpose. So, for example, nutrition services has a $10 million balance. They need those cash reserves to buy summer food in a normal year. So, number one, we wouldn't want to spend nutrition services dollars down to zero because they wouldn't have any money to buy summer food. But you can't spend that on items outside nutrition services. So, it isn't available for general operations as you would, if you read the article, would indicate that that $10 million is available for the district to use however it wants to. It isn't. You know, the special liability account, which is almost a million dollars, that's a specific mill levy for legal torts and claims. So, again, we can't pull that million dollars out of the special liability account to pay for PPE. It's for legal torts and claims. The biggest item by far is the special reserve for $54 million. That's your health plan. That's workers' comp reserve. Again, those aren't operational dollars available to spend in other areas. So, we certainly can go through any of those that you have questions on. The highlighted items in yellow are one-time money balances primarily left over from fiscal year 20. If the board will recall, one of our strategies in March was we put a hard stop on spending because we weren't in school. We did not want the district as a whole to be spending dollars when students were not present where we could avoid it, knowing that, we had no idea how we were going to, at that point, open schools. We didn't know what that meant for us as far as response to the pandemic, what supplies would we need, what, overall, what were we going to do? So, we said, let's hold spending. We also knew there would probably be an enrollment impact, but we didn't know what it was. So, you can see, we specifically put some dollars in preschool at-risk, in the at-risk account, in the bilingual account, in parent education, in professional development, knowing that there were going to be, one, COVID-related needs in these accounts because we had put a hold on spending these particular funds, we're going to need some dollars to get rolling. But two, we knew these were the areas where we would have a potential enrollment impact. And we wanted to somewhat soften the blow with one-time money until we got back to hopefully some more normal spending patterns where there's not COVID and we're not so detrimentally impacted from an enrollment perspective. So, we knew it was, it would be one-time money, and once it's gone, it's gone. You know, it's interesting, if we were, you know, a private sector company and we had done these things, we would probably be applauded for fiscal responsibility. But in a school district, you're penalized for being, or holding on to cash when you shouldn't hold on to cash. You know, I feel very, very good about where we are from a cash balance perspective. We're smack dab in the middle of the pack in the state. We're not too low. We're certainly not on the high end. We know compared to other large urban districts, we're on the lower side of a cash balance. The only flexible funds we have as far as unplanned unbudgeted funds are in contingency reserve. And as we talked about with the board in the spring, we had a great need to put one-time money for fiscal year 22 needs primarily because that's when we expect some sort of reduction in state funding. We were very concerned with the, that the state might have to be late on a state aid payment or they would have to reduce, you know, late in the school year, and our abilities to adjust at that point are minimal. So, there was a plan for that. We took those dollars that we could have spent on supplies or whatever in the spring. We said, let's do the right thing for the district and get it in a good position to respond to whatever comes next. So, I feel pretty good about it. Capital outlay, they don't include. Bond and interest, they don't include. And then they don't address the federal fund advance, which is primarily CARES at that point. So, that's what I wanted to share with the board tonight. And I know you have a lot, so I can take a few minutes for questions, but otherwise we can move on.
Ben?
Ben Blankley, District 1. So, I think we all know that the vast amount of our annual budget is people, people-related expenses. It's not stuff. So, if we had a mid-year state aid cut or a shortfall or something like that, what would the timeline be for a reduction in force in our employment?
So, if we're, normally when, and I'm going to answer your question in a kind of a roundabout way, normally in a year where we might have that kind of, where we would have this kind of budgetary impact, we would start with a plan of not filling positions as they turned over. We would pull back on a few of those type of items. In a pandemic, when we're needing to socially distance and we have a sub shortage, all the tools in the toolkit that normally address budgetary issues, we can't deploy. So, for fiscal year 21, we are, we're a little bit challenged on our response. Now, we have not missed a state aid payment. It's early enough in the year that we may not have to do as much maneuvering, hopefully. We anticipated some of that, not as much as we saw. For fiscal year 22, again, I think where we're going to really be watching very carefully is when the consensus revenue estimating group gets together in November and they start to make their forecast for the upcoming, you know, next 12 months. I think that will tell us a story as far as what needs to happen and when as we go into fiscal year 22. But fiscal year 21, because we had, we had held quite a bit back unbudgeted, knowing that we didn't know what the enrollment picture was going to look like, all of that flexibility is gone, not a whole lot left, but we should not have to do any sort of cutting into this current fiscal year. And really, I don't know where we would, given the fact that the normal places we go, we can't go. go, we can't go.
Thank you.
Ernestine?
Well, I want to thank you for coming up with this and showing it to us. I know that there's a lot of people in both the teachers and the public that are, have an idea that somehow or another, there's great amount of money saved just because the kids aren't in the schools. And this has really been a very helpful thing. Have our transportation costs gone down? Have our utility bills gone down?
So at this point, utilities are running pretty close to normal. We've not, again, we, we just saw September and October, so we're always a month behind.
Sure.
So we really don't have a whole lot of data to look at. But the first month was close to last year at this point. So it's less, but not substantively less because there are people in buildings. I mean, if you can shut down the building, or reduce those temperatures, or raise the temperatures in the, in the hotter months, then you really see savings. But when people are occupying buildings, and we're trying to temperature control, and we, again, we're trying to move that air and do all those things in, in related to COVID response, we're not seeing a huge amount in utilities. Transportation, again, because those buses are running, and we, whether they're running one, two, or three routes, we pay the same per day. Not a lot on the transportation contract, but we're seeing some savings in fuel.
On the fuel?
Yep.
Okay.
Not, again, not, not enough where I can tell you what that's going to be yet. We haven't even seen a whole lot of first student building, billings yet. So, and I've not looked at fuel specifically, but we should be able to trend it here in another month or so.
Is this chart, this one right here, but all of, all of this chart, is this online at our website?
So yes, that, not in that version, but as part of the budget book, there is a page that's unencumbered cash, and it doesn't have my nice notes explaining what it is. But it, all that is, is, you can trace every single balance back into the budget book.
Well, the reason I ask is that there have been some people that have written me saying, can I look at what has been the impact of COVID on our budget? And I just think this is just a really clear, clear way of looking at it, and I appreciate how clear it is. Thank you.
We, we're down 2,621 students as of the official date. Have we seen any increase in that a few weeks out now?
I can tell you, enroll, enrollment is happening particularly at elementary, not, not pre-K as much, a few. But we are seeing enrollment, some enrollment return. I wouldn't say it's anywhere close to getting us out of that hole, but I think we are seeing some enrollment. We could probably get you those numbers if you want to see those. We haven't pulled them.
Well, I just, I know our suburb, suburban, suburb districts are also saying their enrollment's down. So the kids are somewhere. They haven't left us and gone to Goddard or Mays, but, but they're staying home probably. So is there any talk at the state level of using a second enrollment count date?
We have not heard, we've not heard that from KSDE. Now, I've heard anecdotally, some of the superintendents and other business officials that have expressed an interest in looking at that, but we, we have not heard that officially from KSDE.
Okay. That may be something we want to put a bug in somebody's ear, because if we're going up, that would be good. And I, I think it would help everybody in Kansas. It's not just us.
I will say that we are advocating for that. And not, and it's all across the state there. We, superintendents are advocating for that. We actually even have it in our legislative platform, so, of being able to have a second chance enrollment date. They have that in military areas where there's military bases. Those school districts already have something in place called a second chance, a second enrollment time. And so we're asking that we are, we be allowed to have that exact same consideration this year as a second chance. So whether they're not, they'll allow that or not, is still up for grabs. But we have put in letters, and we've gone and talked to folks from our district advocating for just that.
And I assume that's a legislative issue, not a KSDE issue?
It's, it's, it's probably both of them working in conjunction with each other. We have a funding mechanism from the legislators of how we get paid. So it's just a matter of the state then helping and putting their platform together to be able to go when the time is right, when they're back in session or whatever it is, they are able to advocate for that. So again, if anybody wants to help out, they can always write their legislators and ask for that second chance for enrollment numbers. So any of our SEIU, UTW, you're, you're more than welcome to join in that advocating for us to be able to have that second chance with enrollment.
We, we would just want to put a big asterisk by at-risk, that we want at-risk based on the first count date, because there is some issues for us related to our free lunch applications that we're good through the first count date, but we might not be as good at a second count date. So we would just want to asterisk that.
There's always, there's always.
The thing is, is we want all of it that comes with it, not just the count for the kid, but the at-risk.
Yeah, we want the best per category.
That's right.
And truly, I think, as I talk to other, my peers around the, the state, they're all in the same boat.
Yes.
So it's not unique to Wichita.
I think the challenge would be an audit of the, of that second count date, because KSDE auditors are basically working year-round, and they go right into special ed audits. So whether they could confirm that second date would, would be something we would need to, to see, but.
Okay. On the COVID funding, thank you for breaking it out this way. It's very clear to me. The first page that you brought up with all of the secondary technology and so on, where we had roughly, we're in the hole 828,000. And then the spark money might get us out of that hole and give us 500 or 700,000. But the next page is a whole nother list of COVID expenses that we have picked up out of the general fund. Is that correct?
Yes.
So we really are talking COVID expenses.
Right. Not just the general, but I mean, again, out of other funds.
Yeah, we picked them out of, out of our own budget from some, somewhere. So we really are way further in the hole than 828,000.
Yes, yes.
Because that money that we moved from somewhere else into purchasing COVID pieces, whatever it is, came from something that we can't spend on, on another item.
That is correct.
Okay. My third question is, I appreciate the breakdown and the coloring, and this is as clear as I have ever seen this. And, and KPI always puts this out every year, and they put, pick up every dollar that they can see and call it that we're hiding money. Well, we're really not. This is very clear where the money is and, and how it's earmarked and spent. In our contingency reserve, which I think of that as our savings account. That is, we can spend that on whatever we need to. If we, if the state misses a payroll, which, or misses a time when they send us our funding, which they have done in the past, we've got a much, how much money is in that account currently? 26 million?
Exactly.
And that 26 million would pay for what, if the state missed a payroll?
So as far as what it would cover, it would cover about 10 operating days, or if you want to equate it to what payrolls might it cover, it would now cover a teacher payroll and probably two classified payrolls. We would, sorry administrators, you're just out of luck, which at that point, the money is gone. So it would cover a, a teacher payroll and probably two, about two classified payrolls.
So, so we really, if we do away with that money, we have nothing if something comes down on us.
There is no other unplanned or unbudgeted fund other than contingency. Everything else is either budgeted, or there's a plan for, I mean, if you look at like the textbooks, textbook, there is a five-year curriculum plan. So we have those dollars scheduled out for the next five years. So there is a specific plan for those dollars. And if we don't, don't go through with that plan, then there's needs that are going unmet in that particular fund.
So we would be using curriculum that was 10 or 15 years old?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much. I, I liked this presentation. It was very clear to me tonight. Thank you. Stan?
I actually don't have a question, but I just wanted to let Dr. Mike know that I'm not getting any information on my, like, who's clicked on to speak.
Oh, your?
Yeah.
Q isn't working?
Yeah.
Well, you're showing up on mine, so if you need to say anything, I can, I can see it.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate the presentations. Next item, Mike?
Under policy, second review, BOE policy 6333 graduation rule and diplomas. On October 5, 2020, the board had its first review of the following revisions to BOE policy 6333. AIP 1B7 updates courses and/or course numbers to comply with Kansas State Department of Education guidelines for career and technical education programs. AIP 2 updates the options for students with extenuating circumstances. It is recommended the board approve proposed revisions to BOE policy 6333.
And this is our second read. Do I hear any questions or concerns about this policy?
I move that we accept this revision of this policy.
Okay.
I looked at it pretty carefully, and it looks like it's well thought out.
Yes.
I'll second Julie Hedrick, District 2.
Okay. It was moved by Ernestine Crable and seconded by Julie Hedrick that we approve this policy. Please cast your vote. Yeah, it's coming in. Motion passes 6-0. Thank you. Next item?
Under operations, excuse me, just a moment. Gating criteria and learning model for second quarter of 2021 school year. On August 20, 2020, the board reviewed options pertaining only to students enrolled in onsite learning at school buildings and not students enrolled in My School Remote and Education Imagine Academy. The board accepted the gating level for the first quarter of the 2021 school year from September 8 through November 6, 2020, as moderate restrictions, orange, with pre-K through five students in person if parents had signed up for in-person, and students in grade 6 through 12 in My School Remote unless the COVID-19 Advisory Committee recommends movement in either direction, with the minimum being five weeks. Appendix 9 in tonight's BOE agenda includes the WPS Learning Model Decision Making Guide document that the board approved on August 20. Tonight, the board will discuss the gating criteria and learning model for the second quarter of the 2021 school year. This item provides an opportunity for the board's discussion and/or appropriate action.
Welcome.
Dr. Thompson?
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to say thank you to the Board of Education for considering making this decision a little bit earlier. As we've been working with staff, we decided that we needed a little bit more time, depending upon what you all direct us to do. We needed to give staff time, and everybody time, to kind of decompress the decision and then be able to start making plans for it. We felt two weeks was not long enough for us to be able to get started and get moving on whatever decision is made. Hence why we ask you to meet with us earlier.
No other reason but for that.
Thank you for that. So before I turn the mic over to my esteemed colleagues, I wanted to say a couple of other thank yous. First of all, again, I will say thank you to the teachers who have reinvented this wonder, reinvented school. They've reinvented it several different times throughout this pandemic. And I will tell you, it has not been easy, and as others have said, you know, it has been messy. It has not been perfect. We have issues. And, and I'm not going to pretend as if everything is perfect, and I never have given the indication that it has been perfect, or what we have, think is the best thing for kids, nor staff, nor administrators, or anyone. This has not been good for kids. It hasn't been good for parents. It hasn't been good for our community. It has not been good for our country. So I will just be upfront from the very beginning to let you know, it sucks, just to say it in a nice little way. So, and so for anyone to think that we have been painting rosy pictures, that things are perfect, it is not true, because it has not been that way. So I just wanted to put that out there. So second, I would like to applaud the entire team of employees in the Wichita Public Schools. And we are one of the largest employers of South Central Kansas, and we face challenges that most people just read about in the newspaper, read about in magazines, hear about it on CNN. But we are facing those challenges right here every single day in the Wichita Public Schools. And I think we have risen to the challenge with all these complex things that we need to do. A lot of people have worked very, very hard to try to provide the best education that we can for our children. So I want to give a shout out to the members of our COVID Community Advisory Committee, which is inclusive of SEIU and UTW, for providing important perspectives as we consider decisions to the best interest of our students and our staff. And we've had a great group of people that have been meeting and, and working on that. We spent a good little chunk of time discussing what we have, what we're going to be bringing forth today, and we've received input at the meeting. We've received input after the meeting. We received input before the meeting from lots of different stakeholders to be able to bring this forth today. And again, what we're bringing forth is options. None of them is what we want to do. They're not perfect, but we're trying to bring forth ideas that we can use to be able to support children. And I want to also join, I want you to also join me in saying thank you to Kimber Cassett. If she's still listening, she's probably somewhere, oh, is she here? I was going to say, she's probably somewhere, contract tracing or something, I don't know what she's doing. But I want to say thank you to her, along with Danielle, Danielle Detner in HR, and to Randy Scott in our Facilities Division. Those folks have worked 24/7 since the time this pandemic has come into place, and I don't want them to go unnoticed and unrecognized. So I'm just going to stop and give a shout out to Danielle and Kimber and Scott. So please help me. And finally, I'm going to say thank you to our parents, because I know you didn't ask for this either, because you're used to sending your kids and babies to us every single day. But I want you to say thank you for supporting us and for giving us all the feedback. I get lots and lots of emails, one way or the other, for lots of different reasons. But I appreciate those emails and those, and those communications, because it helps us to continue to get better and improve the processes that we do have. So again, I, I want to thank everyone. Board of Education members, bless your hearts. This is a volunteer job, and as Ben wrote on one of his social media page, this is a volunteer job, and he's been, each one of you have been through a lot as we are continuing to maneuver through these muddy, muddy waters to try to do what's right for kids. So I also wanted to take the opportunity to, you know, just talk a little bit about what happens. Each day, we just keep facing tremendous pressures from all aspects of our systems and our stakeholders. I mean, our parents, our staff want us to do one thing, parents want us to do another thing, students have been emailing me, they want another thing, community members, business leaders, everybody's pulling at you from all different directions. And change happens frequently as we adjust and evaluate our work. And so based on our stakeholder feedback, as well as public health, health officials, you know, we just kind of get tugged all over the place. And it's very difficult to kind of, trying to make decisions to meet the needs of everyone. And the truth be told, every decision that we've made, we've just made people angry. Whether during the seven-month period of time, you know, it doesn't matter what decision we make, we're not going to make everybody happy with those decisions. And so, and no one, and sometimes they don't agree with us, but we just kind of have to do what we think is best. And I just appreciate everyone for standing there with us and trying to maneuver through these waters. So today, what we're going to do is we're going to hear from Teri Moses, our Division of Directing and Safety Services. And she is actually one of our facilitators for our COVID committee. And then we also have with us this evening, our Assistant Superintendent of Secondary Schools, Mr. Gil Alvarez. And I'm honored to work alongside of these two wonderful folks, and we're going to try to maneuver through quite a bit of information for your consumption, and then we'll open it up for dialogue and conversation and questions. All right?
Hi. I'm Teri Moses. I'm the Director of Safety and Environmental Services. There is so much information in there, out there about COVID. One of the hardest things we have to do is try to cull down what's important to you. So our slides tonight are some kind of highlights, some of those key decision-making pieces of information. Certainly, there's more out there, because there's no way, even in a 24-hour period, as you know, following the news, that you could cover everything in regards to COVID. So when you look at some of these numbers, I wanted to just take a second to digest. First nine weeks engagement. First nine weeks engagement, 450,000 calls every single day. That's how much engagement we have with students out there, and just think about that, 450,000 calls.
Each day?
Every single day. That's how many, that's how much contact we have with those. Those are students calling in to their classes to be a part of learning in our environment, in this COVID environment that we found ourselves in. The second data point is one that we get a lot of questions about because we know, we knew last March, we got a lot of questions, especially from the media, how many kids are just, how many kids have we just lost? We know when we talked about enrollment, as Ms. Willis just stated, that our enrollment is down. The good news is the enrollment of the, what we do have, the 47,236 students that we do have, really only 39 of those have failed to call in, and yes, we're working to try to track those, even 39. All of those 39 students are in the secondary realm. We've had contact with every single enrolled student at the elementary level. Another question that we get a lot about, of course, is attendance. Some people are surprised by the final column there that's all in green, but the bottom line is our attendance is up, only slightly, but it is up. Our average daily attendance, as you can see at the elementary, less than a point. Same thing at the middle, high, just over, and our special schools, two points. So overall, the engagement of the kids that we do have engaged, we're actually seeing a higher attendance. Again, not incredibly higher, but higher attendance. I'm letting Gil run this PowerPoint and press the button, it's just killing me, I'm a control freak, and... So thank you, Gil. Health, we get a lot, a lot, a lot of questions about health. To put it in perspective, one of the things that Dr. Thompson and the entire administrative staff have talked about is that key word transparency and providing you and the community with updated statistics in regards to how COVID is affecting us on a daily basis. So through, since, as you can read there, since October 1st, we've had 1.6% of our staff that has tested positive for COVID. That's 118 cases out of the just over 7,300 employees that we have. 118 positive out of 7,300 cases.
Yeah, that's as of August the 1st, not of October.
I'm sorry, August 1st.
Yeah.
Yes.
Thank you.
Correct me always, feel free to do that. Students, we've had .15%. Now, of course, that says August 1st, as you know, our students weren't in school until September, so data for students is actually September. That's 71 students, and that's both onsite and remote, and that's out of the 47,000 students plus students that you've heard about earlier. So the two cases there, 1.6% of staff and .15% of students. The other question, and one that has come up already when we talk about subs, is staff quarantine. Mr. Freeman cited it, that we are apparently doing good things in regards to keeping our staff safe, because when we do look at our numbers, we aren't seeing that people are obtaining COVID at the workplace. One of the reasons we believe that is, as Kimber Cassett works with our nurses, is that we do enforce and reinforce and reinforce the need for our staff to stay home if they're sick, and especially if they're notified about the need to quarantine, and that's where we have a current staff quarantine of 4.5%. The other question that we get is, as has already been stated tonight, and that is the guest-staffed fill rate, more commonly referred to as our subs. As you can see, both teacher and para fill rates are down. Again, that's a situation that the nation is facing. When you look at who our guest staff are, they tend to be an older population, and that is the population where COVID hits the hardest in terms of the significance of the disease, and so we've had a large number of people who are generally subs, both at the para and teacher rank, who have chosen not to be subs this year. And again, this is a nationwide phenomenon, but it is certainly something that affects our ability to provide teachers in our classrooms and paras in our classrooms on a daily basis as we face school in this 19, or in this 2021 school year. Stress, can't, can't, can't reinforce this one enough, can't throw it up there enough. I haven't talked to anybody, I haven't talked to a parent, even kids. You know, when you go to an elementary school and you talk to teachers and you talk about the kids feel the stress, why do I have to wear a mask? How come I have to social distance? It affects everybody, and I think Dr. Thompson said it very well. This is not, well, she used the S-word, I won't use it, which is really shocking for me, but, I mean, this, this is putting, this has put in a tremendous amount of stress on everybody that's involved in the educational system, our students, our parents, our staff, and all of our staff, our teachers, most definitely are feeling the stress of having to deal with the adapt and changes, adaptations and changes that have come about because of COVID. You know the, the old saying that says necessity is the mother of invention? Well, I think COVID is the mother of adaptation. We have learned that we have to adapt and pivot as a result of COVID. So stress is certainly out there, and I want you to know that our staff certainly are well aware of it.
And Teri, I think the reason why I said that word is because I'm stressed.
You're stressed.
It's stressed, and those things bring out the bad in, in me, so I was stressed.
You're stressed. But at the same time, as I said, necessity the mother of invention, and we get some great inventions out of necessity, COVID is the mother of adaptations. We've also seen some great adaptations out of result of COVID, and I've heard from more than one, when I listen to the Council of Great City Schools call in, people have said, we've learned something from this, this is something that we're going to continue to do, we figured out we can educate people better in this case. So we are adapting, and I think everybody said that education will never look as it did a year ago. I mean, the things that build you, either build you up or tear you down, you decide, and one of the things that I really like about the leadership group, including everybody sitting at the table today, is that we've taken this head-on and approached it in a nonjudgmental, even our union people, I think, have been very, very accepting of the fact we don't have a group of people that are tearing each other down. We are working together to decide how best to educate the students within our district, and I think that's fantastic, and it just warms my heart, makes me real feel good. When I go to the community meetings, when I talk to the people on the council, it's like this is a group of people that really want to do the right thing. They know that it is incredibly impossible, and we will make people mad no matter what we decide, but there is a passion to do the right thing, and I truly appreciate that. So our current deadlines, where are we? We are here today. We're asking for a decision in regards to the second nine weeks. As Dr. Thompson said, we've heard and included hearing at our community meetings, that people want to know, they want to make decisions, we see the media up here, they want to be able to report. As soon as you vote tonight, there will be a push alert set out by most of the media, that's how quickly people move nowadays, they want to know how they can be planning, begin planning for the second nine weeks. Based on the choice parents made when their students enrolled, no changes at the elementary level at this point in time. Special education services will continue to be provided. That's an important one, it's one that we've heard throughout this, is that need to focus on all students, especially special education students. Our second nine weeks begins November 9th. We have a big decision-making process then coming up for parents. You said early in the process that you would, parents would not be able to make a change in regards to their decision, My School Remote or Online through the first semester. Well, that first semester, surprisingly enough, even though it seems like this is drug on forever, that first semester is not that far away from us. And so in mid-November, we will send out a survey to parents asking for their learning model preference for the third nine weeks, which begins January 26th. That will again, then be processed through the decision-making models, it'll be go back through the community committee, and, and you'll get that information in regards to the survey. At this point, parents may choose to move from onsite, or My School Remote, onsite, or Education Imagine Academy, just like they had that same opportunity earlier in the year to do. So that's your decision-making timeline. Now, the question that we get the most, I think, or one that I get the most, and that is, what color are we? And the answer is, none or all, but there's not a singular answer, and that's what makes this the absolute hardest when we come out here. You saw the absenteeism rates, and that's for all kids, both onsite and My School Remote. So your gating criteria for student absenteeism puts your decision-making model in green. Next one, community gating model, the two-week county percent positive case rate, and you can see we're in yellow, the decision points that were put in there were between 5.1 and 9.9%. As you can see by the blocks over on the side, this was for the data of the weeks of 10-4 through 10-11. Sedgwick County is at 8.4%, and the Kansas, state of Kansas is 8.9%. You heard somebody earlier tonight put it at 9%, and depending on what charts you look at, it can be there, we're using the two-week county percent positive case rate, and that's the one that we're using. So you'll see some other charts that may have it at nine or somewhere, it's a little bit different, but we're using that two-week county percent positive case rate, and that's what you selected when you selected the gating criteria at the beginning of the year. The next criteria is the two-week cumulative county incident rate, and it has been at red and has remained at red, I think, since very, very early on in this process. Both Sedgwick County and KS, KDE, KDHE, again, their numbers vary, but there is no doubt that that number is in red, and it has been in red for quite some time. Then we get down to the bottom line, the community gating criteria and the trend in Sedgwick County, and here you can pick your model. KDHE has this in stable, and Sedgwick County Health Department has this in increasing. And so just to add angst to your decision-making process, when somebody asks you, what are we in, green, yellow, orange, or red? The answer is, we are not. We are not in any area. One of the things, I didn't learn a lot in math class, but one of the things I learned in math class is you can't average averages, and so you cannot combine all these and say, oh, we fall in the middle, it just doesn't work that way. This is, this was what makes your decision even more difficult, is because we truly have a patchwork quilt that COVID has presented us with in terms of the decision-making model. So, that puts us at a decision-making point. Because it is complicated, and because we constantly look at best ways to provide services to people, our learning, our academic side is going to present to you tonight a model that you can investigate, ask questions about in regards to how we can deal with this very difficult decision that you have before you. Mr. Alvarez?
Thank you, Teri. Good evening, Dr. Thompson, President Logan, members of the Board. I'm Gil Alvarez, Assistant Superintendent of Secondary Schools, and tonight, I'm going to present an alternative learning model as an additional option to the current onsite model. We have continued to embrace and are committed to the safety of our staff and students, so we are providing this alternative learning model as an additional option for the Board's We got the idea of this alternative learning model by working through the continuous improvement cycle of plan, do, study, act, which is on the screen. As we receive feedback from teachers, parents, doctors, COVID Advisory Committee members, and administration, through Microsoft Teams, phone calls, emails, and individual conversations, we processed possible changes or adjustments that could be made to make sure our staff and students are safe while continuing academic instruction if students return. Now on the screen is an overview of the four learning models. The first one, if you look to the left of the screen in green, that is full onsite. We are hoping that we can return to this pre-COVID model at some point. All students onsite learning in their schools is what our goal is, and we would hope that we could get there, get back there someday. If you look to the far right, and then the red is the full remote, this looks familiar to you, this is the learning model we are currently in right now, where 100% of secondary students are learning remotely. The blue is the onsite and remote model, which is the original model proposed when students were able to return onsite. The pinkish-purple is the alternative learning model called Blended Onsite. This model will have half of the students come on Monday, Tuesday, and the other half of students on Thursday, Friday. Students would bring their laptop, and Wednesday would be an all-remote day, and I'll get in more detail of these two particular models in just a little bit. But students would bring their laptops and learn remotely whether they are onsite or at home. So I will provide more details about the Blended Onsite model, but first, I would like to share the why or the purpose behind the Blended Onsite model. This model gradually introduces students back into our schools while maximizing all safety protocols, including reducing class size, provides the safest environment from spread and quarantine, and we will continue to mask up and social distance to the best extent possible in all of our buildings. To provide a perspective of how many students will be in a building if 60% of students return onsite, looks like with a school of 2,000 enrollment, we currently have two of our high schools over 2,000, we have one that's really close to 2,000, that would mean that if 60% of students would return, we would have 1,200 students would be onsite if that 60% were to return. With a school of 800 enrollment, that's 480 students would be onsite if 60% returned. So with, as I explained, the new model, total number of students in the building will decrease, the number of students in classrooms will decrease, which is a class-size reduction, and also not knowing what the future holds with the flu season, we will prepare for the flu season, knowing that it's going to be difficult, probably, to determine between the flu and COVID symptoms. Another reason or another purpose is staffing. If students and staff should be quarantined, we will still have opportunities for teaching and learning. Teachers could still teach remotely, and students can still gain access to the lessons through their laptops. This is a way to gradually bring back students to an onsite environment safely. Teachers will continue to plan for remote learning, since students onsite and at home will still continue to learn remotely, but does allow for teacher autonomy if the lesson calls for students to apply their learning onsite. So as I transition from the purpose and the why, this now was the blue when I showed you the overview, so the blue is specifically onsite and remote. This onsite model is the original model that was approved for start of the school before we started with full remote learning. Secondary families would return based on the selection families made during enrollment, just as Teri had talked about earlier, so that'd be, and it's around 60% of our students, and this is kind of an average of all our buildings, but we're really around 60% onsite, and 40% had chosen to learn remotely. So as we look at instruction, what are some of the pros and cons? So instructionally, the pros are five days of learning, if they were to come back onsite, and traditional planning for onsite students. We'd also have special education services would continue to be provided. Some of the cons, instructionally for onsite or the regular or traditional onsite, class size would be higher than preferred, scheduling would also be more difficult. As far as safety, the cons would be class size would be higher than preferred, so social distancing would be reduced, total number of students in the building, in the buildings and in classrooms will be higher than preferred, even with 60% onsite, because we have some teachers teaching remotely, and we have other teachers teaching onsite, so when they return, some of those class sizes would still be at a point that's not probably doable for social distancing. And that goes back to the numbers that you saw, so that's the 2,000 enrollment would have still 1,200 students would be on- have still 1,200 students would be onsite. So let's now talk about the new or the proposed, the alternative blended onsite model. The blended onsite model will still have the option of remote if families chose the remote option. This does not replace that. This blended onsite model is an alternative to the onsite model previously presented for all secondary schools 6th through 12th grade. So the structure of the model would be, you would have a group A. That group A, half of the students would go onsite on Monday and Tuesday, while the other half, which would be group B, would be learning remotely from home. So then the next day, group B, the other half of the students would go onsite on Thursday, Friday, while the other half, group A, will be learning remotely from home. When the student group is not onsite, they will be learning remotely. This cohort grouping makes better sense to control the spread of infection with time for increased cleaning if needed before the next group of students comes to the building. Wednesday would also be a remote learning day, also called a Wellness Wednesday, to provide social, emotional, mental health support for students and staff. Wednesdays could include independent learning, also known as asynchronous learning, for students, so teachers can work in small groups or one-on-one with students. Students can apply their learning without sitting in front of a screen all day, and teachers can plan collaboratively their lessons with other teachers. These are just a few examples of what a Wednesday could look like. So as we get down to instruction, some of the pros for instruction, you would still have five days of learning. Planning for remote only, because your students would be at home doing remote learning, as well as the students in your class would still be on their laptops, learning remotely with the teacher onsite. They would continue teaching and learning in quarantine, so teachers can continue to teach and students can continue to learn if they were in a quarantine situation. Class size would definitely be reduced, and special education services would also continue to be provided. The cons for instruction, teaching remotely, also you hear this called simultaneous learning with students in the classroom. We have heard and acknowledged the concern about teachers having to teach simultaneously with students, both in the classroom and remotely. There have been many ideas that have changed throughout this pandemic, and we regret this one has caused concern. However, we are committed to providing the support necessary for teacher and student success. We're trying to create the best learning model, make the best decisions possible with the information and data we had at the time, which is also what we are doing today and tonight. With safety being our top priority, this model provides the safest environment for our teachers, staff, and students if they return to school. Now moving on to safety in the blended onsite model. As safety is our number one priority, the blended onsite model has many pros. Reduce the number of students in the building. Class size reduced in classrooms. Maximize social distancing in the classrooms and throughout the school. Social distancing on buses, because half of the students would be coming. So instead of most of the students coming, where students may have to sit side by side on the bus, this is an opportunity to have maybe one child or one student per seat. Cohort groups of students will stay together by structure because of the Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday. Contact tracing in groups, we'll be able to contact, and as long as they are six foot apart and continue to mask up and wear their masks, they can prevent from being quarantined. Allow time for social, emotional, and mental health support on remote Wednesdays, also known as Wellness Wednesdays. It is important to point out that students with IEPs will still have access to the same learning models as general education students. IEP services will still be provided as written unless a student's IEP team decides to amend services through a temporary services plan. Existing temporary services plan will remain intact unless the IEP team determines changes are needed. So as I close, the blended onsite model is a result of the evaluation performed as part of our continuous improvement cycle. It balances safety and instructional integrity, provides for a day of independent learning, and a purposeful focus on staff and student mental health on remote Wednesdays, and is structured to allow for us to continue educational delivery in the event that illness causes students or staff to miss in-person instructional time during this academic year, full of pivots and adjustments. This model provides the safest possible environment when the appropriate time allows students to return to school, which is why we bring it to you tonight for your consideration. Do appreciate your time. So now I'll turn it back over to Terry.
We have employed, as you know, the Superintendent's Advisory Committee. So this information that Mr. Alvarez just provided to you was taken to that advisory committee on 10-15. I will tell you that even after 10-15, he has made some adoptions to this as a result of the feedback from that committee. So this, again, that change process is constantly in there. The committee makeup, as you know, is made up of our unions representing our staff, both UTW, SEIU, student, community, doctor, parents. Board members are all a part of that committee that sets that, or that looked at this group. The focus was on providing feedback on this blended onsite model. That was the entire focus of that 10-15 meeting. They received some of the same information that you received tonight in regards to our quilt, in fact, where we are in regards to our learning models and our gating criteria. We did four breakout groups to collect feedback, just like we did last time. We think that's a good way to make sure everybody's heard and everybody has the opportunity to give information in regards to their input. So pros, as Mr. Alvarez said, the pros from the committee, social, emotional health, in-person connections. One of the things that we heard a lot from the doctors and we've heard a lot from the community is the need for kids to have those connections and be on, in-person. And that's certainly one of those that was presented in that number one bullet. Number two, safer model in terms of that social distancing, less people in rooms at one time. One instructional model for secondary teachers, that Wednesday, self-care. I think more than anything from the committee, we heard that one over and over again. And again, when we go back to my PowerPoint slide of stress, that's certainly there. And so this model takes into consideration the need for us to deal with that stress. Providing a consistent schedule was a pro, as well as more student accountability, because they'll be in the building and you'll have both that in-person and remote. And of course, our goal is always higher academic achievement. Moving to the cons, change. Can't change change. The good thing about change is without change, we wouldn't be where we are today in terms of our economy, in terms of our technology, and all the wonder things that we could do. Change is a constant in our world. And as I said earlier, I think COVID is the mother of adaptation. So here we are. And it is unfortunate that we have to make a change in the middle of the school year, but that's part of what COVID has placed on us. Increased workload, we are concerned about that. Dual teaching model, the district said it wouldn't occur. As Mr. Alvarez said, that's one of the parts of COVID that we haven't been able to control. Yes, we have a plan, and then you have to make an adaptation or a change. Another one is can teachers focus on in-person and online students at the same time? As Mr. Alvarez said, that will be one of the focus of our supports for teachers, because we know that is one of those big concerns. Greater potential for COVID spread, and that is if we move to this model versus keeping the kids entirely remote as they are now, and the anxiety that comes along with that. And the last con was the schedule, and that's difficult for working parents, trying to remember, hey, I go two days a week, I go two days a week. Of course, you all know, any parent that's dealt with kids' schedules, schedules are like that. It's difficult to raise a kid in today's world. Additional feedback, one of the things, again, we heard over and over again was that focus on self-care and making sure that that is a part of any model that we choose. Use the model for both middle and high school, was a comment, so there's consistencies. Group families together that have the same, that have different last names, Mr. Alvarez has indicated that we'll be able to do that. In-person students should use headphones to minimize distractions. We may not go with headphones, but we'll certainly find ways to focus on that. If you've ever been in a room where somebody's been on a Teams with somebody else in a Teams, as Wendy and I were going to be kicked off the island more than once for doing that. I do believe that was the correct term that was used. Restrooms during class time, something very, very simple. We aren't going to have passing period use of restrooms. We're going to say, you're middle and high school students, you're old enough to decide when you need to get up and go, and we're going to stop that convening of a large number of people in the hallways and the restrooms. And those are all just things that we've learned from research. Of course, enforce the masks and social distancing, that's been a priority of the district since the start. And another part of the feedback was the flexibility in the decision-making in my school remote or onsite. And then, of course, one of the things that everybody focused on was the need to continually analyze academic achievement. And again, that's one of our goals, is academic achievement, so we will continue to focus on the need to analyze academic achievement. So where does that put you? That puts you with a decision-making model. We are presenting to you three options tonight. Option number one is the blended onsite, my school remote model for middle and high schools for the second nine-week quarter beginning November 19th. I'm sorry, ninth, ninth. That is what Mr. Alvarez just presented to you. No changes to elementary onsite, my school remote for elementary students for the second nine-week quarter beginning November 9th. Option number two, all students pre-K-12 onsite, my school remote for the second nine-week quarter. That would have been your original model that was presented when you made the decision in late August, August 20th, when you decided to keep secondary at home. But this would move that to the secondary for that. And option number three is all students remain as is, and that means elementary remains in the combination of my school remote and in-person, and all of secondary would remain my school remote. Those are the options that we are presenting for you this evening, and we are here standing for questions, should you have any.
We do have some. Ernestine.
Well, first of all, it is a little confusing, because we're talking about those that chose onsite but happened to be studying remotely now because of the dangers of COVID, not those who chose my school remote. Those who chose my school remote will stay my school remote, even secondary, correct?
Yes, you are correct.
So this only deals with the 60% that they said if things were safe, they wanted to come back.
That is correct.
Okay, I wanted to make that very clear, so that parents aren't getting excited about that their system is going to change if they made a different choice. Okay. On one of the things...
Ms. Ernestine, can I, can I add to your thing? This also is inclusive of the special education students whose IEPs are currently there too. So if you're, if you're an IEP and whatever your IEP says, this will not change for you either. I just want to make that clear to our special education parents.
Yes, this will not change for special ed kids.
That is correct.
But I do have a question of what about those classes that are, what they call them, the CWC, the class within a class? Those students whose IEPs say that they are to take a class with a regular class, that a special ed student that is with, will they be in these?
It just depends, Ms. Ernestine. So that's, that's a question that, that gets us in trouble when we start talking about IEPs, because every student's IEP is different. Class within a class could be onsite, they could not be onsite. So that's, again, individualized. But what I am wanting to make clear is that the students whose IEPs have been rearranged so that those students are onsite right now, this does not impact them as well. Whatever they currently have right now, they will currently continue to receive those services as is.
Okay, I hope parents get that, because that's really important.
I just make sure, I know that's very important, because I want to make sure that that has been answered.
Okay. I will tell you that I have deliberately sought out the views of some teachers. And one of the things that was kind of exciting was that a teacher that just about two or three weeks ago was talking to me, and her stress level was so high that she was almost in tears. I talked to her this week, and she says, oh, we're kind of getting the rhythm of the remote. And so she was kind of panicky, just because they had finally gotten the rhythm of the remote. So I want to clarify that they're not going to be really doing last year's kind of in-phase teaching. They're going to still be teaching remotely, but with the kids, half of the kids in front of them. So they aren't going to have to have two different lesson plans, one for those that are on, on their computers at home and those that are in, in front of them. Okay. That doesn't sound like it's a very exciting way to teach, and yet, on the other hand, it's not much different than what they're getting at home anyway. I will tell you that, that the whole idea, all of the teachers I talked to scared the dickens out of them, the idea, because of how do you control and deal with discipline or deal with student issues with the kids that are in front of you and the kids that are on the little bitty screen. So that's where I ask a question of, of Mr. Dixon and of you before, is if most of the classrooms have one of those big whiteboards that can be technologically used, I could see this working if the teacher can take their, instead of having to carry their little computer around with them like this, if they can take that students that are remote and put that up on the, on the whiteboard, so they're looking at their students in the room and the students on the whiteboard simultaneously, as opposed to down here and up here. Some of you remember me saying that when I taught middle school, it was like teaching in a popcorn popper. And so I know that at every time, there's going to be something happening all around. So I'm wondering if there isn't some way that a teacher could have a remote camera on her or him, so like if they go to show something on the board or a map, that they're showing it without having to make a big drama about, pick up the computer, go over and turn it around like this. Does that make sense? How do you show, like if you're going to show a map? Now, I'm talking about middle school now, because I know the high school has got a document, I mean, got two things, one that has their students on and the other that they can put their lesson, lesson information on. But the middle school kids don't have, the middle school teachers don't have that, and so they have to like pick up the, I'm talking about seven and eight, have to like pick up the computer and sort of carry it around with them with it in their face.
There's two, a lot of teachers do have document cameras, and some do not, but some do. So they could use a document camera to project into the computer so both onsite and at home could actually see whatever document or map that they're pointing to. Another way to do that too is if you find the same map online and you can share the screen using Teams, then both could also see it. And if you're using the whiteboard, like you said, or the smartboard as the projector, and so when they've...
They can project.
They shared it on, on their computer for those at home, but then the ones onsite could actually see it on the whiteboard at the same time.
That's right. Well, I'm trying to figure out how the students see the teacher's face without her carrying this around in the room.
The teacher would have to be, if they wanted them to see specifically their face, they would have to stay behind the computer.
Okay, all right, okay. That's all for right now.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Thompson, did you want to add anything?
Coming closer. I just saw my colleague coming closer, so I didn't know if he had any, any...
I think he was...
Okay, all right, that's it. Thank you.
Okay, Julie.
Could you go to page 15? And I know you talked about this a little bit earlier, Dr. Thompson. I just want to understand exactly what's being done for our, for our kids with IEPs. So can you explain to me what this means about the temporary services plans and acting and just all of this on slide 15?
We sure will. Dr. Vince Evans will come and, and talk a little bit about what this means.
Good evening.
Thank you, Dr. Vince.
Good evening, board members. I'm going to take this opportunity, because I think it's a great clarifying statement, and it might help you all with your decision tonight, to read from KSDE's grading criteria. And there's a statement, I'm sorry, their gating criteria. And there is a statement at the bottom of this page, it's available online. I can share this with you all later, so you have an electronic copy. But it says, "State and federal special education statutes and regulations require that school districts provide a child with a disability who has an IEP with a free and appropriate public education. Accordingly, a child's IEP team may decide that if a child should be served onsite regardless of gating criteria, while still it is following, sorry, while still following any applicable requirements from local and state health officials." So what that means is that no matter what you decide tonight, that if an IEP team decides that a student needs to be onsite, that is within their authority to do so. And that would be your temporary services plan.
Okay, so the temporary services plan is for them to be onsite?
That would be one of the powers that that could have, yes, absolutely.
Okay. And part of the reason I'm asking this question is I have had some concern. I mean, I know we've all been hearing from parents and teachers and everything. But I have had some concern that that all kids with IEPs or 504s should be able to be onsite. So how is it happening that that's all being determined? And I assume it's because of the, I assume it's the students' IEP teams that are making these decisions. But can you talk to us a little bit about that? And whether you see in the future maybe potentially more of those kids will be able to return to onsite? Just talk to me about that.
Absolutely, it's an excellent question. And I want everybody to keep in mind, when we're talking about students with IEPs, that's a wide range of students. And I don't want anybody to be under the impression that that's several hundred kids that we're talking about. That's 8,000 students in our school district. And some of them, we found we have no problem at all meeting the services that are outlined within their IEPs remotely. Let me give you an example. If it's a student who has speech services, 20 minutes, one time per week, we found that many of those students, we can give that service even over a computer and it's still effective. I'm not saying that's every student under those circumstances, but many of them. We find many, you know, students with extreme needs, it's not working so well remotely. And that IEP team is having to make that determination for this isn't for you, we need to bring you onsite for either a portion or possibly even the entire day. My recommendation to you would be to continue to leave that at the individual discretion of the IEP team.
And those IEP teams are meeting at their, at each individual school for every child that has an IEP?
Absolutely. And any parent that wishes to request an IEP meeting certainly has the authority to do so as well.
And so, and are parents included in those IEP teams when they meet?
Parents are a member of an IEP team, yes.
Okay, okay, great, okay, that's very helpful to me. That's my first question. My second question is, we did refer to in this document, we've talked about this also at this meeting previously, but we referred to those Wellness Wednesdays. And can you just talk to me, Gil, more about potentially what those are going to include and how we're going to make sure that that we really do have opportunity for teachers and staff to have that Wednesday as a time that can be a self-care day? I mean, talk to me more about the Wellness Wednesday and what the plan is for that, though I realize you haven't had a whole lot of time to put together a plan for that.
Since the Wednesdays is going to be a remote learning day, we would have to make sure that teachers provide asynchronous learning or independent learning for students. So that could be applying their learning in some way, shape, or form where they don't have to sit in front of a screen and give direct instruction. It could be an assignment, a project. It could be with science where you're taking a field trip to the nature center if you're able to do that, to apply the learning that you did in the class. Well, while students are doing that independent learning, that's where the teachers would have opportunities to collaboratively plan, to actually call students one-on-one because maybe there's a student that they have not been able to reach and they want to talk to them one-on-one because they need more, they need extra help. It could be a social-emotional type of activity. It could be a professional learning. So there's a lot of opportunities, but depending on, is that all day? Is that a reduced timeframe, or sorry, a reduced schedule in the morning where the entire afternoon is for asynchronous or independent learning? Those are the kind of examples that would happen. In high schools, you could even have students do, get an ONZELLO, which is that college and career or college exploration, the ZELLO that we have to, for them to look up colleges or take the assessment that tells them what career field they're in and tie that in. So there's opportunities for that. There's social-emotional lessons that can be provided as the independent learning for students in that afternoon as well. So a lot of different ways that we can really leverage the Wednesday remote learning day to provide some time to, for teachers to have some social-emotional time or at least just collaborative time because a lot of them are saying they're just, every second, they're working hard every day, having a time where they can at least catch up, whether it be grading, collaborative planning to prepare for the next group of students. It's just a great opportunity for that Wednesday to do a lot of different things.
So is that going to be left up to the discretion of each individual teacher? Are they going to be the ones that make those decisions for how those Wednesdays are going to happen? And if they, if they need a, if they need a break on a Wednesday, they're going to find another alternative way for the kids, for their students to have their learning happen in a different venue?
We'll have some type of structure. So if that is, so if we're saying we're reducing the time, your entire day class schedule, you're done by noon. So kids are going to go, but during that time in the morning, the teachers may have given a short lesson and then provide them the independent learning lesson that they're going to do in the afternoon that's due the next time they go to class.
So there will be some structure provided, but then then within that structure, the teacher will have discretion?
Correct.
Okay. My third question, and this is an IT question. So we may need our IT person. But as far as all of those students sitting in their classroom doing their remote learning off their computers, is their capacity at all of the schools to be able to have that happen so that we're not going to be just dropping everybody off all the time? I know there's already challenges with the remote learning and the keeping connected and not losing folks and, you know, turning off cameras and, you know, all the things that are happening with the remote learning even at home. So how is that going to work when everybody's onsite?
So Rob Dixon, Chief Information Officer, good evening. One of the things that will be nice in that particular situation is all the students within the class, they could participate in the chat, but they don't necessarily have to have the video up at that time because they're going to be listening to that teacher right there in front of them. So that will save on some bandwidth. But at the secondary schools specifically, we've put an access point inside every classroom. So as long as we stick to that classroom environment, we'll be fine. But we'll start to evolve that setting. And as I spoke about before, we're developing a technology strategic plan that will identify how our wireless network needs to move forward as we look at a one-to-one that was implemented in just a couple of months, so.
Okay. And then I'm just, my last thing is just a comment. And I spoke with Superintendent Thompson about this yesterday, I think it was. One of the comments that I heard from one teacher, again, we're all getting lots of emails and information from teachers. And I heard from a teacher, actually, it was a teacher one of my kids had. And this teacher wants to be able to actually, when they're onsite, to still prepare a lesson for their kids that are there and then have the remote kids have a different lesson. So I mean, I know, you know, we're trying to avoid that double work. We're not, we're not going to tell teachers they have to do that because we're trying to avoid that double work. But if an individual staff person wants to do that, do they have the prerogative to do that? Or do they need to stick with the plan of we're just going to be doing our remote, but we're going to be doing it in the classroom?
Gil Alvarez, Assistant Superintendent, on the slide 11 on the why, it's specifically that last bullet talks about, will allow autonomy for teachers. So if a teacher, and I could think of a lot of classes, especially our elective or exploratory classes, where they want to apply the learning. So if you have an art teacher that wants them to get and throw pots for those students that are onsite, they'll have a chance on that one day. Then the next group will have a chance on the next day. While maybe there's some students doing some independent learning while the teacher's watching the kids onsite throwing the pots or getting those. So art classes, CTE classes, because we've heard the same. So they would be allowed to have the autonomy to create the learning environment that they think is best for the students.
Okay, thank you very much. That's all my questions for now.
Yes, Ben Langley, District One. I have a few. The whole paper is full. So, sorry. But this is why we're here. So simple questions first. For our, Dr. Thompson, for our, I think it was 31 COVID-positive elementary students in-person, how often did we have to quarantine an entire classroom? Do we know that offhand?
I think we've only had to quarantine an entire classroom two times.
Okay. So essentially, our social distancing is, in the elementary, in-person at least, is working at least so they, so we didn't have to quarantine a whole bunch of people. So staff quarantines, are we having widespread meetings without social distancing? Is our staff getting closer than they really need to be? Is there any one particular piece we can point at to say, okay, this is why the staff quarantines are so much higher than the student ones?
I think Terry Moses, the Director of Safety Services, most of those staff quarantines are from personal events outside of school, where they've traveled somewhere, they've had a family member that has contacted it and they've been asked to quarantine. I'm not aware, like with the student quarantines, we've had very few quarantines that have been a result of a close contact at work. I tell people all the time, we should all make it our goal is if somebody, either I or somebody else comes down with COVID that's within my work group, we ought to be able to say there are no close contacts here because we are following social distancing guidelines.
And I can have a personal note of last week, I was at work and I had, and there was a positive COVID case that was identified in my workplace. And it just happened to be a day that I was at work. But none of us had, were identified as close contacts because we maintain that distance and that timeframe. So, okay. So that, are the devices that we have, the student devices that we have currently and the ones that are in the pipeline to arrive, how long do those batteries last without plugging in? And second question, you know, kind of to Julie's infrastructure point, I know we had charging carts for Chromebooks and everything, but they can't be used while they're in the charging carts. What kind of infrastructure do we have in secondary classrooms to facilitate that kind of power draw?
So we just bought, I'm not sure exactly the number of power strips, but we did buy a number of power strips for the classroom. Dependent upon the device, really depends on what you're doing on the device. So I'd say those new HPs, if you're in Teams all day long, which right now is a resource hog, if you're doing, you know, a whole class of 30 and with video, probably a couple of hours. But without that video that you would just have in the classroom, it should last quite a bit longer on a charge. And remember, those are, will be still within the first year. So, you know, from a general standpoint speaking, those batteries should outperform most of the other older devices that we have. So I think, I think from a power standpoint, we'll have to look at that because I think it's, it's a complicated matter just because understanding how much voltage is there within that classroom and what happens from there. Some of our buildings are older than others and have less power capacity, so.
Gil Alvarez, Assistant Superintendent, we have bought those power strips that have like eight to 10 outlets on it for every classroom, every secondary classroom.
Okay. Okay, let's see that one. We provided, way back before school even started, we provided cloth masks to employees. And in at least my experience, the my school remote teachers that my kiddo interacts with are typically teaching without a mask on because they're alone in their own classroom. And now there are some exceptions, some specials teachers that are rushing between in-person and remote, sometimes keep them on. And usually when somebody, when somebody else comes into the room, they put them on. But there is, like, we all have disposable masks on for our speaking into microphones. Do we anticipate any sort of an issue regarding, you know, the cloth masks that our teachers are typically wearing in the in-person settings? Having troubles kind of doing that, you know, being understood on the remote camera, especially like Ernestine said, if they're away from their computer, you know, the laptop microphone picking them up clearly if they're wearing the cloth masks that we provided prior?
That actually is a good question. Again, as we learn and try to figure and maneuver through this and fiddle our way through, that's a great question. And that's something we'll have to process through. And I agree, you know, when you have those cloth masks, it's a little bit more muddled than it is when you have kind of this, whatever kind of mask this is, whatever fabric it is. So that is something to consider. And what does that look like in a room when you have your mask on and you're trying to also work with the students on the computer? Great question, and we'll have to figure it out.
Okay. Okay, so we, in our original plan, when we started the school here, we would say, we said there would be no, like, re-enrollment shuffle between in-person, my school remote. And this was prior to the, prior to even the decision that we made, putting secondary in full remote. Are we going to, are we going to hold fast to that, that we shouldn't? Because I know, at least, like with, you know, not to, you know, personal story, but I am a parent of, you know, my school remote kiddo, and so I've experienced this. Some of his classmates, their adult supervision largely is their older sibling that is home because all secondary is full remote. And so I'm guessing it's probably not a large population of students, but I'm guessing there is a population of students out there that are being the facilitators and also remote learning. And if they are then, if their, if their, you know, parent figure picked in-person back in August and then now they're an in-person student, I think there'll be a family shuffle, a little drama that might not have to happen if those students would be like, well, I'm in remote, I'll just stay in remote and stay home with my siblings. I don't, I don't know, is that something we're going to hold fast to? Or are we going to go open it up on like a case-by-case basis or something?
Don't you think most parents that had one kid in my school remote would probably have the other in my school remote too?
You know, I don't know. That's, that, I mean, that might be a, maybe a data point that we could pull or something, but I don't know. I mean, maybe some folks thought, you know, that their secondary students would, I mean, families are all mix of all different kinds of people. And so, I don't know, that's a good question, Ernestine. I'm not sure. I guess, maybe I don't have a question regarding that, if we're going to hold fast to that or not. It's easier to say, we're not, we're not going to let, we're going to. It, it's easier to say, we're not, we're, we're not going to let, we're going to, the decision you made in August sticks, whether, you know, we keep secondary students in full remote or let some of them come back or, or whatever. Is that, is that a can of worms we, we should open or not? I don't know. I guess, Dr. Thompson, what do you think?
It would be nice to be able to open it up, but because of the way that special, I'm not going to talk about elementary, I'm talking about secondary, their schedules, that is a nightmare, to say the least, and our counselors cannot, and the class sizes and all of that, it's just, it just creates chaos in a secondary school when you try to shift when it's not in the right way at that semester. That semester is key for them, and then all bets are off, we can do what we want to do. But when you're in the middle of a semester with the class, it's just hard to, it's just hard. So I would say we would want to stick hard and fast to that for secondary and as much as possible.
Okay.
They can ask Grandma.
Yeah. Is it, is attendance taken for secondary just once daily, or is it more frequent than that?
Gil Alvarez, Assistant Superintendent, secondary-wise, they take attendance every class period. So if they have eight class periods, it would be eight times. If they, it's a case of high school, they have a four-by-four, so they'll take attendance all four class periods.
So the data that we're seeing here, it includes that all eight times per student, essentially?
That's correct.
Okay. That, that's a, that's refreshing, because I know the anecd, the anecdotal that's out there is that, you know, a lot of kids are missing class, a lot of kids are missing school, and, and I, you know, that's good to know, that, that kids are getting logged in and kid, you know, kids are participating in the, in the remote learning. Let's see. I guess I have a statement, any onsite option we pick risks a whole class quarantine at this point. I mean, we've got potential for whole class quarantines in elementary. If we allow secondary students in, we're risking another whole class quarantine. So just be, just regardless of if we pick any onsite option, we still have to let families know that there's a possibility that your student might end up at home for 14 days multiple times throughout the year. You know, especially with, you know, if, if, as cases increase, as, as the frequency increases. Because like right now, 200 cases per 100,000 is about 0.2%. So for our high schools, that's at least a couple known cases, if you extrapolate from the general public to our student and staff population. So that's at least a couple known cases already, minus the ones that aren't diagnosed, haven't gotten a test. And so, it's not a question of, of if we would get some close contact quarantines, it's a question of when. So, so yeah, it, the, the being able to shift from a potential onsite model to remote learning at the drop of a hat, I think is a, is a, is a significant factor that we did, would, we have to consider. Okay. Do we have an aggregate feeling on student mental health for remote students compared to what we would see during a normal year, I guess?
Well, we, we don't really have data, but we did do this year was to do some, we have a SABERS assessment that teachers have given to students that they felt like needed that assessment. And so at some point, we could bring back some data of the, the students that were assessed with SABERS, that teachers felt like needed that. So we can bring back some of that data, but to say that, I'll just be honest, I think everybody's a little bit more stressed than most years. It's not a rosy picture, I wouldn't say. You know, kids want to be kids, they want to go outside and play, they want to go to the mall, they want to hang out with their friends, they want to go to the ball games, they want to do all of those things, and that keeps kids less stressful. They want to engage in the clubs and things that they do at the school. So to say that kids are not missing out, and as I stated earlier, my heart just aches for them because they're missing out on being a kid. So to say that kids aren't stressed, I would not say that they're less stressed or more stressed. I would just say that I believe that kids are feeling some pressure, and kids respond differently to these kinds of things. You know, my kid is fine, but there are other people that are her, her friends that I talk to their moms, and they are struggling at home because they're not able to interact with other people. So I would say we're all over the board, but I do think that it is having an impact on not just our kids, but our parents. It's having an impact on administrators, teachers. It, it is just having an impact, so I would say yes.
Okay. Let's see. I guess it, it, you know, we're, we make statements instead of questions. So I guess my final thing is, I guess the proposed teaching, teaching virtually and having students in, in, in class at the same time, it feels to me like, it's kind of like what our community partners are currently doing, like at the Boys and Girls Club, where it's more like a study hall almost. So I don't even, it's tough because I don't, I don't think in, in, in the proposed blended model that, I don't think we'd even be getting to the kind of educational interaction that I think our, you know, our, our loudest parents are, are asking for. And I, you know, in our, in our first ring suburbs around Wichita that are in this kind of model, I, I don't think they're, they're achieving that either. And so, I, I'm, I'm a little bit thinking that kind of a hybrid model is the worst of both worlds, in a sense, that it, you know, you can't get the teacher-to-student interaction like you would normally, and then you also throw in the, the remote learning component. So, I mean, a lot of times on this board, we kind of come to a consensus, and which is a good thing, you know, I, I think that's a good thing. But I don't know if, if, if this proposal, even though it's a, it's a middle-of-the-road solution, I think it's, I don't think it's achieving the best of, of, of in-person and remote learning. I think it's achieving the worst of both. And that's all I have.
Ron?
Ron Marcellus, District Six. I partially agree with what Ben was just saying, and I think that, that would probably be the case with high school, for sure. And I, I would propose that, you know, we could look into middle school for this, for our blended, but because of the grade separation. But I do hear what you're saying. I mean, I'm, I'm working right now, and, and we're, we have something like this. We're making it happen, but right now, a lot of things are just not as effective as, you know, going back to one-on-one. So with that said, I, I know on page 12, under number one B for cons, and I think Ben alluded to this earlier, but about scheduling. So just so everybody understands, so ideally, if, let's just say, a freshman walks in, they get all freshman classes, English, social, or English, World History, Math, and Science, and then a couple of electives or something like that. So I, I was talking to a principal a while back, and, and he was trying to educate me on scheduling, and, you know, he was going, oh yeah, I said, well, what's, you know, how's, how does it get complicated? And he goes, well, you got this freshman goes over here, and then they got this class, and it reminded me like a game of Plinko, you know, this kept on going all over the place. And I, I finally just, I said, okay, I believe you, I, I understand what you're saying, it is complicated. So for just like a freshman going in and getting a, you know, just straight-up freshman classes, what complicates the scheduling where, particularly in high school from ninth to 12th, that really just makes this, you know, in a, in the con category?
I'll give you a specific example. This is Gil Alvarez, Assistant Superintendent. If we, when we try to balance the staffing of teachers, so a student comes in and they, they want to take Honors English One, that's a ninth-grade class, there's, there's only enough students and staff to say, well, that class size may be 30. So that one teacher's teaching 30, even though some people say that's high, but that's because 30 kids needed to take Honors English One. So those 30 are with that teacher. Right now, high schools made it happen because they're a full remote. So there's 30 kids right now that's at home doing remote learning to that one teacher in Honors English One.
And freshman happens to be the largest class in.
It could. It all depends on, you know, what students need what. We have a lot of singleton classes, what, that's what causes all the, the, we, we offer so many different opportunities, which allows those, and those teachers may teach two sections of, of English One, and maybe they have creative writing. And that's not a good example, because a lot of, if you're teaching ninth grade, you probably have a, a schedule of ninth and 10th grade. But going back to, if you, if those 30 kids right now are fine, but now we're saying, let's go back to onsite and remote. We're, we're going to go back to 60% onsite. If out of those 30, 25 of them chose onsite, so they come back, well, they got that teacher teaching 25 kids, because that's the only teacher teaching Honors English One, those, so now, now there's five kids left that still need their Honors English One teacher, but we're not, we're not making, if we don't do the blended onsite, they can't join, they're going to, they're going to stay, I need a remote class. So they're, they're either going to have to determine, we're, I don't take second semester Honors English One, I got to go to English One. We could tell them to take edgenuity, which would be asynchronous learning, or we can share, if, if, if available, other schools. Maybe there's, maybe there's an Honors English One at another school teacher that has 15 kids, then we can take those five and, and over, so it's just going to take, that's the difficulty of trying to make a class or not make a class. And it's, and that's a simple example, but when you start getting into AP courses, it's more difficult, because now you only have one section of it. You don't even have.
More specialized classes can be more complicated.
More complicated. So hopefully that helps, but that's why it's so difficult, and I think sometimes internal stakeholders, I have to give a shout-out to counselors and registrars who are trying to figure, and APs and principals are trying to figure out this puzzle piece of, of this complex schedule, but you don't really think of it until you have to try to put it together, so.
Right. And then, so it's even complicated more if it, if a student transfers from another state or even another district, because their district has something that they've already taken might not match up with ours, then that gets.
Correct.
Wouldn't that complicate things as well?
And that definitely could, could. But our, they, they do a good job of trying to see what, what is equivalent to that and try to, try to get them in there as well. So that's, that's just one of the reasons why it's, it's so difficult when you have the choice, because normally, we would have had an opportunity to have a second Honors English One class, but this teacher's now teaching remotely to, to a whole other class because that's how the schedule played out when we were trying to help all students either choose remote or onsite at, at the time, at the beginning of the year. So it just becomes a little difficult.
And Ernestine, just to kind of go back to what you were talking about, the camera, I have a coworker, she pushes around a cart, has the laptop on there, and, you know, teachers, we get innovative. Seems to work. I, I've carried mine around a few times. I just carry it, yeah. It's a good workout.
And that's why we did put the caveat too, I forgot to say, we put the caveat on, if you're doing remote, not all courses may be offered if you're doing remote, because we're concentrating on the onsite, for the, the explanation I just gave. So that, that's one of the reasons why we had it on the sheet at the beginning of the year. Yep.
Stan?
I'm going to, Stan Reeser, District Four, I'm going to try to stay on the broad policy question that's before us tonight. And at the end, in order to help this conversation, I'm going to attempt a motion. I believe it is time that we start cautiously moving toward more in-person learning. That has not been an easy decision for me, but I think it is critical that we start making that move toward that direction. Why did I come to that conclusion? Well, one, the Kansas Board of Education, Dr. Watson specifically said that the current total remote is unsustainable. Our KNEA representative also said the same thing. We are going to need to start moving toward a cautious approach to in-person learning. The one, and the, another reason for that is, we are the largest school district with the most kids that need that type of learning. There is not another school district in which it, in Kansas that needs that in-person contact. And remote is exciting for some kids, but I can tell you down in my district of working families, they are hurting. And the word stress has been brought up tonight, and there is not one single group out there that can claim all the stress that, that this has created. This has affected everyone. I think also, if you look at what we've done with the elementary-level school, we have shown that we could do in-person learning if we take precautions. It's not perfect, but it is better than the stress that we are creating right now for a vast number of our students. We are stuck in yellow slash orange, and we are going to be stuck in yellow slash orange for a long time. Dr. Fauci, if I'm saying his name right, Fauci, he has said that there will not be anything normal till July of '21. And that's without a vaccine, and, and even then, I don't know if he, he's probably revising that as we speak right now. So we cannot continue down this path of only remote 100% for any more time, in my opinion. Why not just open it up? I got to admit, I have toyed with that idea in my mind, saying, let's open it all up, but it's not possible. And I think Ernestine's shaking her head, I mean, and I agree with you, Ernestine, that's not possible either. The reason why that's not possible is because when you are in orange and yellow, you are going to end up, you could open up completely, and then we can almost guarantee that we will have some shutdowns. So, it, I think it's just important to realize that it's time to start making this cautious move toward a blended in-person learning model. So with that, I'd like to move, just to help the conversation, I'd like to move that the Board of Education adopt Option One, the blended op, open MySchool Remote model for high schools and middle schools, and that we continue the current onsite MySchool Remote model for elementary schools during this same period. And this would begin, and I believe the date was, was said November 9th, and that's my motion.
And go until?
Oh, and, and yes, and for that second nine weeks. Sorry.
Before I second, may I?
Yes.
I would like to, and I don't know that without a second I could amend it, but I wanted to suggest that we maybe had a pilot project with an, with a middle school and a high school right at the beginning of November 9th, so that we can begin to get some irons, some things out, and then go into what you're saying. That was what I was going to make the motion for. Would that be an amendment you would accept?
I could not accept that amendment at this time because that does not address the issue of the vast number of students that the Kansas Department of Education, Dr. Watson, what we, what we, the vast number of students that are going, that need us to start moving toward in-person.
I, I hear you, but I'm suggesting, like, for example, on November 9th, that it would be one high school, one middle school for, say, three weeks, to begin to be able to see how this, like, I'm concerned about, I know that students have been turning off their cameras at home because of bandwidth at home. Can a teacher in school with the class there, and this, in which they can't see the students, but they, how? how is this going to work? And I think it needs to be, have a, a little bit of a, of an experiment. And then, like, for example, three weeks would take us to Thanksgiving, and then after Thanksgiving, we'd go to full, full district.
Logistically, I can't answer that question. I, I, I think our charge as a board is to make, is to make policy on what we need to do to improve this school year. We have already lost last spring, we have already lost this nine weeks, um, for some students and parents. And if we do another three weeks, and maybe the superintendent will correct me and say, that's a wonderful idea, but if you go, then you start going another three weeks, then you gotta analyze that. So I'd like to stick with my original motion.
There is a motion on the floor, is there a second? I will second it. Okay, the motion was made by Stan and seconded by Cheryl, but we still have speakers that want to speak, so I want to recognize them before we take the vote. Okay, and I happen to be the next one up. I just wanna make some clarification, so it's really clear to our, to our audience. If we ended up accepting this blended onsite mo, uh, option for our kids, we're really looking at that sixty forty you've been talking about, and let's use a thousand kids in a school, just to make it easy. So at sixty percent, that's three hundred kids that would be coming back to school. And of that, uh, I beg your pardon, six hundred kids that would be coming back, of that, three hundred kids would be there on Monday and Tuesday, and a different three hundred kids would be there on Thursday and Friday. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And in between, we can clean the, the room and so on to be able to get it ready for the new kids that come in.
That is correct.
And so a teacher in a classroom would still have students that are on remote, working remotely, and they would also have some students there in front of them, uh, that would still be working remotely, but they'd be in the classroom.
Correct.
Okay. With that, I, there, there have been all kinds of, and I, I, like all the rest of us, have been getting all kinds of emails. It seems to be landing that some of our teachers wanna stay remote, some of our parents, most of our parents that I'm hearing from wanna get their kids back in school. My concern is, we had our parents choose, and that's how we know it's roughly sixty forty for every building. I feel like we need to honor those parents, too, and figure out a way, kind of like Stan said, to get kids back onsite. If we did the, bring, do a pilot program, which on the surface sounds like a good idea, but we have again delayed most of our district from being back onsite. I just don't think that's right. If, if we happen to have a classroom that, a Monday, Wednesday, or a Monday, Tuesday classroom that came in, one of the kids got COVID, we would quarantine out that group of kids if they hadn't socially distanced and had masks on, correct?
I, I believe that is correct, is why, if you have less students in there, and they are socially distanced.
But we would follow the regulations of the Health Department, and I guess this may be a question for you, Alicia. We would follow the regulations of the Health Department, just as Ben didn't have to quarantine, because they had socially distanced and kept masks on. So we may have to quarantine those kids, but we very easily may not, too.
It just depends, and so I have my nod up there, it just depends. And that's the importance of having that smaller class size, which you would have. It's the social distancing, which you will have. And so when you have that opportunity to do that with that six feet away, then you're able to let quarantine less children. But if you're packed in there, and even if you have your mask on, and you don't have social distancing, it's hard to know who was where and what, what, and then the majority has to go, they have to go out. So the, the importance here is social distancing and having the masks on, and allowing the contract tracing from the Cedric County to occur, and then they will be able to give us guidance. So it just depends on the room, the social distancing, the masks on, and so on and so forth. So it is pretty complex, and it's not just as simple as, oh, every, somebody in the room gets it and everybody gets to go home. It's just not that simple. It's got, it's, it's meticulous, kind of, it's kind of like puzzle pieces again. It's all those things that have to be done to determine who and what happens with students in the classroom. So that's, I wouldn't be able to answer your question, yes or no.
But we would be able to, if we had to quarantine those children out, we would still be able to teach them remotely.
That would be correct.
Okay.
With the, with the blended model, you would be able to do that.
Right.
Yes.
Okay. I guess that's the end of my questions, so, okay, Ernestine.
Well, as I mentioned a minute ago, I know that some, that a number of the teachers have said that the students have to turn their cameras off at home, because, that especially if there's other people working, like parents remotely or other students, because it was drawing too much. I don't know enough of what it's called, but too much bandwidth, is that what it's called? So I do think that there's going to be less of a problem with this, because apparently some of the kids will just turn their cameras off, and they'll, they'll check in with the teacher, but the teacher will be able to ask them still questions. I do wanna make another comment from a teacher. She said that she had seen with the remote learning, better attendance than she had last year. Because she, a lot of those at-risk kids were trying it out, and were, were coming back in and having better. So I see this as a, as a real good possibility. I just see too many complications with the technology that I would like to see. That's why I was saying about the, the, uh, my suggestion was, for the pilot, was because I just think that as we work it out, that it will make the teachers less tense if they could get some direction of like, we've worked this out here and we'd work this out there.
Yeah, and I'm gonna be upfront, as I always am. Uh, it, it's not gonna be right when we first start. It's going to be messy, there's gonna be problems, and we're gonna have to problem solve, as we always do. We listen to Kim when she emails us like four or five times a day with things, and we appreciate it, because that helps us to be able to solve the problems that are happening in the field, uh, and get whatever teachers need. We know there's going to need to be professional development for teachers to be able to support them. And I absolutely know that we have some of the best professional developers in the IT department that would be able to support teachers there, as long, as well as our instructional coaches that we have within our school district. So it is going to be messy, we're gonna have problems. We need to hear what those things are, so that we can begin to work through those things to try to make lemonade out of lemons. So that's what we'll be doing throughout the process.
I do wanna say that I do hope that there's a caveat that Wellness Wednesday is not used for more staff meetings. Wellness Wednesday is not used for even more staff development. That does seem to me that, that administration, custodians, everybody is gonna need some downtime, and the teachers at that point, giving them that, I think will make them feel better about going into this plan, because that gives them that day as a cushion to be able to figure out the, the lessons and, and have a grading time.
Well, professional development is PLC, professional learning as a community, with teachers working together to try to problem solve these things. There's no way that we're not gonna be able to not give them what they need. So if teachers are looking for opportunities to get some professional development, to help them to do better with the, with the, with the tools, we're gonna offer those opportunities for teachers, because I think that's fair. We shouldn't just leave them out there just to be floundering. We should give them it, but also there should be opportunities to allow them to catch up on things, look at their emails sometimes, too. So I think it should be a combination of all of those things. And I do think that we will be able to work with teams of people. I know Gail's got teams and groups that will be working to decide how all that goes, because that's not been ironed out yet. But wellness is, is important for the students and the teachers, but also helping them and giving them the tools that they need is also important.
Now, I've heard that Federals are talking about giving tests, uh, opportunities for the COVID test nationwide to schools. Have we heard anything about us getting any of those COVID tests? And if we have them, what would we do with them, and how would we use them?
Well, all those are good questions, and, uh, there's, there's lots of discussion out there in our communities about all of that. Right now, what we have currently is that teachers do have access to tests. So, uh, if, and they've opened that up through the, uh, United Way, nine one, two one one, not nine one one, two one one. So if anyone has symptoms or things that, you know, wanna be tested, even if you don't have symptoms right now.
Even if they work with kids, they're, whether they have temp.
They are able to do that now. So we currently have a system in place for that. There's lots of conversations out there around other opportunities. We're engaged in those conversations, just not sure where, where we are with that, what we're gonna do, how all that's gonna work. But we definitely, uh, will just be looking at all options. But right now, educators already have an opportunity for testing.
I was referring more to tests for students. Do we, will we be doing anything with that?
Currently, we have, we have nothing in place right now to test students. Well, we hear lots of stuff from the feds, but we haven't, we haven't, we have not received any direction from the federal government at this point, as it relates to testing students, nor, um, our staff. We just are using our local, what we know we have, which is the two one one, and our staff members can get tested there.
And it was so wonderful that they said that anybody working with kids, whether they had symptoms or not, could at any time come and get a free test.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And some of the teachers asked me, and I know that the answer, but I want you to say it to them. If teachers have to be out for either quarantine or for COVID, is their healthcare, is their sick leave covering it? Or is, will they, will they lose some of their sick leave, I guess is the question.
Well, and I'm not gonna be able to answer that question, because it changes every five minutes. So I'm gonna let the person who has the most accurate information to, to speak to that. I don't wanna say anything inaccurate.
Good evening, everyone, Sean Hedsbeth, Chief HR Officer. If somebody goes out on quarantine, as you know, then they are placed under the FFCRA, and so they have that time available to them. Right now, we have been trying to give them as much flexibility as possible. And so, again, we are looking and evaluating how many days they have been off from work. And then, in some cases, we are able to credit some time back to them, because of the leave bank that is, uh, where people can donate leave time. So we're trying to do that, but right now, we've not even been notified that anybody has been put into deduct status as a result of any leave that's been taken thus far.
Well, if our teachers go out in this situation, could we let them teach, the quarantine teacher teach from home and let a monitor come and stand in the classroom?
If you do have the blended model, you will be able to do that. So if a teacher is needing to be quarantined, and Gail, you can correct me if I'm wrong, they could just take their computer. You could have someone, uh, for the students that are in attendance there, you could have a facilitator in that room while those teachers are teaching, if they're not sick and, and they're able to. We think that that could be something that could be done in this blended model.
That's correct, and that, it would not count against their leave. They would be working, even though they're working remotely.
No, secondary and, and elementary education both, we have tried to be as flexible as we could. Am I good? Okay. So we're, we're trying to be as flexible with them as we can, uh, Ms. Crable. So at this point, even if the teacher has to be home under quarantine for themselves or for a family member, as long as they're not showing any symptoms of illness, because we don't wanna interfere with their leave rights to take that, then we are allowing them to teach remote if that is what is allowed and is acceptable. You're welcome.
Ron?
Yes, I just wanted to comment that, um, I, I partially agree with what Stan's saying about, um, you know, the sustainability and those kind of things. And I'm looking at the Option One, and is there any way that we could, maybe have to come back to it, but just to have it from, for just middle school for the blended. I just see too many complications with the high school, um, uh, with the schedules that we were talking about. And, uh, you have work schedules, you have, uh, parent schedules and so on. But again, however, I, I'm just from experience, I know that the, uh, what we're doing currently right now is not the best and most effective for our students. I know Dr. Thompson had talked about this earlier, but you know, there's a lot of people coming to you with different angles. And kinda like what Stan was saying, you know, our focus has to be on education. It's what we do, right? It, we were here for education, but unfortunately, you have some coming with the angle of, uh, safety, some coming in with the angle of health, and it very, it complicates a lot of different things. So anyway, I was just thinking that, that would be a compromise to get, you know, at least the middle schoolers back in and, uh, maybe the high schoolers until January. But, um, going back to the committee, if the committee would, um, you know, uh, with, with the SEIU and UTW and whoever else is on that committee to maybe, um, give us some more input after this, come January, to, you know, make a really good, hard, uh, effort to go as, or to bring back as many students as we can by January. Because again, like what Stan is saying is, you know, absolutely true, and Dr. Watson said it as well, is that, it, it is not sustainable, and, and it's, it's something that is, uh, in my experience, is not teaching our children to the best, that they could be taught. You know, we make a lot about how, uh, we need effective teachers, we need effective tools, and so on and so forth. But, um, this is just, in my opinion, it's, it's, it's okay, it's getting us by. But anyway, that's just kind of my thoughts on that. But I, I could see it working for middle school, because you, again, you have the separation between grade levels, whereas high school, you have a lot more choice, you have just a lot more, um, uh, options and things that will complicate the, uh, the, the process of bringing students in and educating them well. But, um, anyway, that's kind of my thought on that, and I, I just would like to, um, see if that's something we could maybe amend. But if not, then I imagine we can go ahead and go with the vote.
If you wanna propose an amendment, you do that to Stan, because it's his motion.
Okay.
Ron, the, the problem with, with what you're saying there is, is still not achieving the goal that I think you and I share.
Yes.
Because we, we have a lot of the same constituents of working families. And you are now, as I mentioned before, um, we lost the spring, very little summer activities. We lost this nine weeks. And if we exclude high school at this time, uh, it would be very difficult to go back to your working families and said, and say, you helped get them in. That's why I said, that's why I opened, I opened my comment with, it is time to start cautiously. I, I agree, we have to be cautious. It is time to cautiously move toward in-person. So I would encourage you, I, I think, and Ernestine's question about the pilot, if you're, if you're looking for a sampling size, you can look at what's going on at our grade schools right now, on regard to if this was to raise number of cases. So I, I think this is the best option for us at this time.
I, I would just say that, um, you know, going back to what you were talking about, or Ernestine was alluding to as well, was with like an, you know, experiment or something like that. But you know, middle school is that blend of elementary and high school. And I think that's where we can learn the most, is if, if we adjusted it. But you know, if you wanna go.
Yeah, and I know what you're saying. The problem is, we, we can't all, we don't get exactly what all of us individually want. And so, that's why I was saying this is the best. and so that's why I was saying this is the best option in front of us today.
Very well.
I have a question to you, Gil, about what you've talked, I know, to talk to the high school principals, and there's some concern about can high schools do this? What are you hearing back from your principals?
Gil Alvarez, Assistant Superintendent. Right now, we, we feel that talking to them and providing feedback of pros and cons, scheduling wise, it would actually be easier to allow kids to get the courses that they actually would need in, in a complex scheduling situation. So being able to, to not leave out those five in Honors English, now they can all be still, the 30 kids are now taking 30 from the same teacher. So they're, they're, as a consensus, that they are on board with the blended onsite.
Okay, so, so basically, and I don't want to put words in your mouth, they're really telling you that we already have the classes set up. The difference is, we're going to now have some kids in the building and some kids at home, but the classes are going to stay pretty much the same through the semester. Is that, is that a fair statement?
I'm going to say yes, to an extent. They're, they're waiting for the decision, because scheduling will be different if it's blended onsite. If it's remote, it's going to stay the same, but if it's regular onsite, that's going to look different, because that's going to be more difficult, as we shared as one of the cons. So they're just waiting right now to determine, but.
But, but with the option one, with that blended option, they feel like they can do it?
Yes.
Okay, and I would like to point to page 17 to just look at again at that committee, because I think that committee was, is providing us with some valuable information. Because they're really saying the pros are, we are getting kids back in, social and emotional health-wise, even though they're working on the computers, they're in the room with their peers, they're interacting with peers in a different way when, than when they're sitting at home and can't really interact at all on the computer. Is that a fair statement, too?
Can you say that again?
Yeah, the, I see kids in a classroom, if, if we were your on-class class, and you were teaching from your commuter, computer to us with a computer in front of us and to the other 15 kids that are at home, we can still see eye contact with each other, we can still interact with each other, we can still talk to each other, and the kids that are sitting remotely at home, that's much more difficult for.
That's correct. Gil Alvarez, Assistant Superintendent, you could actually use teams to break out the kids that are on, at home on the computer in breakout rooms, and you could have the students that are onsite have a trio or a partner discussion.
Right.
As long as you're six foot distance and still have that, that conversation.
Yeah, they could still do the kinds of things you do in school with each other in the sense of with the social distance and in the masks.
Correct. It won't be as great as it was before, but you could still do some, correct.
Yeah, but it's better than not anything, because that's what I keep hearing, particularly, I don't think I've heard from a single student who said anything other than I want to come back to school. Now, I'm racking my brain, because I've had a lot of emails, but, but I've heard that from other people, but I don't think I've heard, I think from a student, I've heard nothing but, I want to get back to school. If they wrote me, that's the reason they were writing.
Correct. I know Ms. Hedrick also talked about the teacher autonomy, because there are going to be some teachers that want to apply the learning for the student that are onsite. That's another layer of opportunity.
And if you have a chemistry class, the kids that are remote may be doing the experiment in a different kind of way than the ones that are onsite, that they can actually get to the test tubes and all that kind of thing.
Or doing an assignment, and their turn to do the lab would be the next day that they're onsite.
Right, right. Okay, they also said it's a safer model. They, the teachers are still only preparing one prep for each class, because it's all done remotely, which that's a huge issue with our teachers. That Wednesday, I think, is going to be our saving grace. It's actually going to give everybody that breathing room and the time to think. It does give us a constant schedule, students can be held accountable in a different kind of way, and they're anticipating higher academic achievement because of this. I think that's a pretty comprehensive list that supports this model that you've put forward to us. The one thing I want to say very clearly to our public and to our parents and to our students is, we don't know what's going to happen with COVID. It could go south on us really fast, and we might have to put everybody, including elementaries, out on all remote. And if that becomes the reality, we are ready to do that now, because our teachers understand how to teach remotely, and even though we don't like it, I think, I agree with Stan, now is the time to us to bring kids back in in a safeguarded way, with as few kids in the building as we can to still be able to get where we want to be. Okay, Ernestine?
Actually, I think I've said all that I need to say, so I'll just let it go. I, I did want to, to thank all the administrators who are doing this. I think that as the teachers get a chance to mull this over and understand they're not having to do two different lesson plans, I think they'll be, the stress about change, that's the real thing, is that they've just now got this other going, and some of them are just finding, the kids are doing very, very well under this remote system, and I just think that the, it comes back to what my friend Stan over here was saying about change, and you know, that change is happening.
Okay.
I think that they just need some time to be able to figure this out, and I just, this is the best that we've got, but I'm not thrilled with it. One thing about it is, is that we can't put the kids back fully. We've got those old buildings with small rooms, we can't, social distance in Robinson, East High, you know, some of those that were built in the 1920s. We've got to find a way. That's all.
Okay, we do have a motion on the floor to accept option one for the next nine weeks. The motion was made by Stan Reeser and seconded by Cheryl Logan, and I think I'm ready to call the question. I don't see anybody else that wants to speak. Okay, you may cast your vote. Punch again, Ernestine, you haven't gone in.
I can't make my finger make a there.
Okay. Wait a minute. The motion passes four to two with Ben Blankley and, and Ron Rosales voting no, Julie Hedrick, Ernestine Crable, Stan Reeser, and Cheryl Logan voting yes. So the motion passes four to two. Thank you very much, and thank you to, for all your hard work and for a whole lot of people's hard work to bring this to us. Thank you. Next item, Mike?
Under miscellaneous executive session.
Julie?
I move that the board recess into an executive session to discuss the current status of negotiations between the BOE and the Service Employees International Union, SEIU, Classified Group, and the BOE and SEIU Security Group pursuant to the Kansas Open Meetings Act exception as allowed under KSA 754319, and the board will return from executive session to this room at 9:15.
Stan Reeser, District Four, second.
Okay, the motion for executive session was made by Julie Hedrick and seconded by Stan Reeser. Please cast your vote. Motion passes six zero. We are in executive session. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Ben Blankley, District One, I move to adjourn.
Stan Reeser, District Four, second.
It's been moved by Stan, by Ben Blankley and seconded by Stan Reeser that we adjourn the meeting. Please raise your right hand if you agree. Motion passes four zero. The meeting is adjourned.